Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Business Meeting for Monday, October the 10th, 2022. I will call the meeting to order and we will open with our presentation of colors.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the Central Cabarrus High School Air Force JROCC program and their personnel includes Cadet Major Jared Valdespino Moran, Cadet Major Randy Walker, Cadet Captain Kathy Ramos Barrera, and Cadet Technical Sergeant Jackson Kenny. Honoring America tonight with the singing of our National Anthem were members of the West Cabarrus High School Advanced Chorus and their personnel included Zoe Amberson, Jalen Burke, Michaela Connor, Kennedy Harper, Lizzie Hoover, Myla Joy Jacobs, Noah Liszmbi, Vinty Little, Valen Long, Sarah Obisant, and Anaya Richardson. The Director of the West Cabarrus Choral Program is Mrs. Laura Turner. Thank you.
Thank you, and once again, we will say welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening and also welcome to those that are joining us live stream. Board members, we will begin with our setting of the agenda. 3.01, may I have a motion that the October 10th, 2022 Business Meeting Agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We will move to our recognitions and begin with 4.01, our Impact Through Education Awards, and we will have Mr. Phil Farr to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kupicki, good evening. Tonight we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Carl A. Farr Elementary School and the Performance Learning Center. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representatives, Adrian Caspar and Emily Satterly, to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for his continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. We're in our 13th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now on to tonight's awards. We'll begin with Carl A. Farr Elementary School. May I have the Farr Elementary Administrative Team, please come forward. Our first honoree from Carl A. Farr Elementary School is Jonathan Belton. Jonathan, please come forward with your family. Jonathan is a problem solver and will do what he can do to help everyone's interest. He comes in with a smile every day and does everything that is asked of him. He is someone that you can keep in your corner to cheer you on and he will cheer you up when needed. Jonathan exemplifies a growth mindset by trying new things and never giving up. He is a leader to his classmates by consistently modeling great behavior. He willingly participates in class and adds great ideas to class discussions. Jonathan Belton always perseveres and tries his best at all tasks given to him. He takes initiative to help his teacher and others and even helps other students with procedures. He follows all directions given the first time and truly shows respect to all adults and peers, day in and day out. He's always smiling and always shows a love for learning by asking questions, being attentive, and trying to apply all new skills. Jonathan is a model student. Congratulations, Jonathan. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Farr Elementary School. Our next honoree from Carl A. Farr Elementary School is Mariah Hill. Mariah, please come forward with your family. Mariah is a hardworking student who comes to school ready to learn and always puts in 100% effort. She listens respectfully to adults and encourages others with kind words. She always looks for ways to help other teachers and students. Mariah is quick to share, willing to serve, and positive in the midst of a challenge. Mariah is an active participant in class who loves to participate in class discussions. Her positive attitude is contagious and she always shows a growth mindset towards whatever challenges she faces. She has strong values and adheres to them daily. She has a very positive influence on her classmates and is a wonderful role model. Mariah is a leader at school and her peers respect her. Mariah makes an impact in other people's lives by the way she conducts herself in the classroom. She is a kind friend and always greets others with a smile on her face. Congratulations, Mariah. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Carl A. Farr Elementary School. Also from Farr Elementary School is staff member Ms. Cheryl McQueen. Ms. McQueen, please come forward with your family. Cheryl McQueen is a retired New York City Police Officer who moved to Cabarrus County in 2005 and soon began her work with Student Behavioral Support as a Behavioral Management Technician for Cabarrus County Schools. She has served all schools within the district and is the one you want by your side in times of crisis. She officially joined the Carl A. Farr Elementary family this year as their Student Success Coach. Her daily goal: keep students in class and learning. She works with the children of families that have the most challenging behaviors. She has a wealth of knowledge in de-escalation and behavioral support. She works closely with our staff to make us better at preventing and responding at behavioral needs. We call her the child whisperer, as she works hard to help children, never gives up on them, and is committed to high expectations for them. She will jump in anywhere to help with a child or staff member and has formed lifelong relationships within this community. Her impact will last beyond her lifetime as her work is changing the trajectory of children's lives. This is why Cheryl McQueen is Carl A. Farr's Impact on Education winner. Congratulations, Cheryl. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Carl Farr Elementary School. And finally, from Farr Elementary School is Teacher Shelley Wasco. Ms. Wasco, please come forward with your family. Shelley Wasco began her career at Carl A. Farr Elementary moving from another district in 2015 as a classroom teacher. She then moved into the role of K-2 Reading Interventionist for the school. In 2020, she began her current role as MTSS Coordinator for Carl A. Farr. Shelley makes everyone in the room feel important and is a wizard at scheduling the interventions for our students. She is respected for her follow-through and will find answers to solutions that best support all students at Farr. She is an advocate for all students. She is kind and inclusive to all stakeholders in difficult situations and in seeking solutions. She knows our staff well, tapping into strengths while helping them grow as individuals. She knows the name of each student and works diligently to help each one grow at Carl A. Farr Elementary, and this is why she is our Impact on Education Award winner. Congratulations, Shelley. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Carl A. Farr Elementary School.
Thanks.
We'll now continue with our October Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming the Performance Learning Center. May I have the PLC Administrative Team, please come forward. Our first honoree from the Performance Learning Center is Kayden Puntarich. Kayden, please come forward with your family. Before coming to the PLC, Kayden struggled in the regular high school setting. Since joining their school community last year, Kayden has blossomed and is set to graduate early with honors. Kayden's teachers commented that he always strives for perfection in his classes. He doesn't just want to get through the material, he wants to understand it, to do his best, and encourages other students to do the same. Kayden is all business and goes the extra mile to assure he is caught up and working towards his best grade. Kayden is self-disciplined, self-motivated, and loves to learn. He is always looking for ways to improve skills and knowledge in all subject areas. Kayden continues to set an example for other students to make sure they strive to do their best, and this makes an impact on education at the Performance Learning Center. Congratulations, Kayden. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the Performance Learning Center. Our next honoree from the PLC is Yacenia Marine Perez. Yacenia, please come forward with your family. This is Yacenia's third year at the PLC and she is a great asset to the school community. She leads the YCI Club and works together with teachers to create big events that impact the entire school. She is one that staff can count on to take initiative and follow through on responsibilities. Her teachers state that she is always making sure all her peers are doing well first. During lessons, she advocates for herself and peers by asking high-level questions. Yacenia's positive attitude, pleasant disposition, and strong work ethic make her a model student, and the Performance Learning Center is proud to recognize her tonight. Congratulations, Yacenia. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the PLC. Next, from the Performance Learning Center is staff member Robin Stansel. Ms. Stansel, please come forward with your family. Robin has been at the PLC since its inception 14 years ago. Her official duties are administrative assistant, receptionist, and treasurer, but she is so much more. Every student, staff member, parent, and guest that walks into the building immediately feels welcomed and respected. A student will never walk past her without receiving a compliment that will make their day a little brighter and better. This caring and generosity permeates throughout the school, and she carries this into the community as the school's number-one supporter. Robin and the PLC are interchangeable. She has created a legacy in Cabarrus County and this recognition is a small token of appreciation for the hundreds of students whom she's had an impact on in their education. Congratulations, Robin. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the Performance Learning Center. And finally, tonight, from the PLC is Teacher Heather Hawking. Ms. Hawking, please come forward with your family. Heather Hawking has been a teacher at the PLC for eight years, teaches all science courses, and has been a part of Cabarrus County Schools for 28 years. To her principal and staff, Heather is a quiet leader whose demeanor, kindness, and professionalism is appreciated and respected. To her students, her calm delivery of the curriculum and professional management of her classroom is admired and welcomed. She successfully creates a blended learning environment that is focused on student learning and students find success in your classroom. Heather goes about her duties with efficiency and pride. She is the type of teacher who one would go to for advice, and her contributions are valued and continue to make an impact on the education of students at the PLC. Congratulations, Heather. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the Performance Learning Center. This concludes our Impact Awards presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farr. Okay, board members, we will move to 4.02, which is the Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month, and have Dr. Marion Bisch to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. So, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Kupicki, and our viewing audience, both here and those watching on livestream, it's, as always, my pleasure to introduce you to our Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for October. We always want to begin with expressing our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hilbisch Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this recognition program. Our Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for October is Rachel Smith, an exceptional children's teacher at Cox Mill High School. And at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Smith, her family, and any members of her school administrative team to come forward. Tonight, Mrs. Smith will receive her award, but first, we want to share the nomination that was submitted by a parent about Mrs. Smith. During the recent lockdowns and evacuations at Cox Mill High School, Ms. Smith made sure her students were cared for and safe. She provided protection from the sun and hot weather, drinks and snacks to make sure the students were taken care of. Trying to keep a classroom of children with special needs calm and cared for during a stressful time is not an easy job, and Ms. Smith does it with ease every single day. She especially steps it up during difficult times. Even during this uncertain time, I knew my son was always safe because of her care and the care of the assistants in her classroom. They all should be recognized by how they go above and beyond at all times. Ms. Smith, thank you for the impact you're making to teach and engage the students in your classroom and those you reach through your selfless dedication to community service. Congratulations on your selection as the Cabarrus County Schools Hilbisch Teacher of the Month for October. I'll have Dr. Kupicki bring you your certificate and check.
And then a group photo as well. All right, on three, everybody. One, two, three. Got it. Congratulations.
Okay, board members, we will move to 4.03, Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award, and we will have Mr. John Legrand to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kupicki. It is once again that time as I proudly present this month's Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award. This award is presented monthly to an employee within our Auxiliary Services Department, which includes our Kids Plus, Facilities Maintenance, Construction, Student Nutrition, and Transportation Departments. This award is selected monthly by our department directors and is intended to recognize the outstanding behind-the-scenes work of our employees in Auxiliary Service that often goes unnoticed. As we know, there's great work being done daily and we want to recognize it publicly. In addition to this public recognition at our board meetings, we are very grateful to have our partners at Great Wolf Lodge that have generously provided complimentary water park passes for four to each month recipient of our Everyday Hero Award. Unfortunately, unable to join us this evening is this month's recipient of the Everyday Hero Award, Ms. Sarah Caldwell. Ms. Caldwell is the Head Custodian at the Glenn Center, which is the oldest, as a matter of fact, it is turning 100 years old this year, and perhaps the hardest to maintain facility in Cabarrus County Schools. She was nominated for this award by Mrs. Wendy Byrd in our Accountability Department. Here is what Ms. Byrd had to say about Ms. Caldwell. "Sarah Caldwell is our Head Custodian at the Glenn Center. Accountability Services, Kids Plus, and Technology are all housed here. This is one of the oldest facilities in the district, actually the oldest facility in the district, but certainly one of the cleanest and well-kept. Sarah goes above and beyond to ensure this. She takes great pride in her work and always does more than the duties in her job description. Sarah strives to make our office spaces and bathrooms safe, clean, stocked, and comfortable. Her work ethic is admirable and she should be recognized for the exemplary employee she is." The entire Accountability Services Department unanimously agreed that Sarah definitely deserved this nomination. I would personally like to thank all students and parents, or I'm sorry, Ms. Byrd, for submitting this nomination, and I would personally like to say well done to Ms. Caldwell, and I hope she's listening or we'll see this later, and congratulations on truly being an everyday hero. Thank you, Ms. Caldwell.
Okay, that concludes our recognitions. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to take a moment to go ahead and leave, please feel free to do so. And board members, we will move to the approval of minutes under 5.01. May I have a motion that the board approve the amendments for the open session meetings for September the 12th, 2022, and September the 19th, 2022?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move to Item Number 6.01, which begins with the Board Chair comments. I would just like to take a moment to recognize the anti-bullying month of October. As you see, all of your board members are in blue, or at least the majority of us are, and we want to say thank you to Ms. Burns for getting us our certificate, which each board member has officially signed. We also want to say thank you to our SRO that is with us here tonight. Thank you for being with us at all of our meetings. We appreciate it. And with that, I will move And with that, I will move the mic over to 6.02, the Superintendent comments. Dr. Kepicki?
Thank you, Mr. Grimsley. This evening, I'd like to start off our recognition with welcoming our principal from R. Brown McAllister, Mrs. Jessica Blanchard, and her three staff members, Laura Cabanas, Brittany Rogers, and the Assistant Principal Tiffany Nichol to the stand. Recently, R. Brown McAllister, a STEM elementary school, has officially received the North Carolina STEM School of Distinction recognition. Acknowledgement for the school designation as a model STEM school took place during the North Carolina Public Schools State Board of Education in Raleigh. I want to say congratulations to R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary for their hard work and commitment to STEM education. I also want to point out that currently, last week, I was fortunate enough to join Jessica and Laura at the meeting at the State Board of Education in Raleigh, where they were recognized, and Jessica will speak to that in a few minutes. But I want to point out, right now currently, there are nine elementary schools in the state of North Carolina that have a model distinction. And I say that because there are only 36 schools in the entire state and more than 115 districts and thousands of schools that have this distinction. Of the nine elementary school recognitions for model designation, four of them are Cabarrus County Schools: Patriots Elementary, Coltrane Web Elementary, and Beverly Hills Elementary. And now we welcome R. Brown McAllister with this distinction. It is a rigorous, demanding process, and an application you have to fill out and meet the five requirements to get this distinction. It is not an award that is handed out. It is a very rigorous process to achieve. So I commend all the schools that have received this recognition, and I commend R. Brown McAllister and the leadership of Mrs. Blanchard and her staff this evening for attaining this recognition and again highlighting the incredible, wonderful things that our teachers are doing on a daily basis in this school system. You know, oftentimes, we hear a lot of the complaints and the negatives, and I want to say to you, there are way more good things going on and much more positives taking place in this school system. And we need to celebrate that more and talk to that more. And I'm going to hand it over to Jessica, but I cannot tell you how, A, honored I was to be included and to humbly stand beside you as you received this recognition, and secondly, just to commend the outstanding, excellent work that you're delivering to our students. And Laura, I know you don't want me to say this, but I have to mention it because she'll be mad at me later, but that's okay. And to speak to the teachers, you know, we have incredible teachers in this, in the system, and I want to point that out every chance I get. But Laura, years ago, was a Milken Award winner as Teacher of the Year, and that is an incredible honor and is such a rare honor for a staff member to receive that. Now, she received that many years ago, and we had a conversation this past week about that award. And as I walked away and started thinking about that, I thought, I wonder how many people even remember that or realize that. That is the, I would say, one of the top one or two prestigious awards a teacher can receive in this country. That is a United States Country Designation. You have to be one of the best in the country to receive that, and Laura is one of those teachers working here in Cabarrus County. So again, it speaks to the excellence that exists here amongst our teaching staff. So I congratulate all of you for all the wonderful work that you're doing, and especially for your dedication to our children, which is why we are all here. And then I will, Jessica, hand it over to you and for your comments. So thank you, folks.
Am I on? Yes. So I do want to note that Brittany Rogers was not able to join us in this change since I talked to Dr. Kepicki just a few minutes ago, so that's our change, not his. And Alicia Fane, who has been at R. Brown forever.
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years, is able to join us. And I asked some of our team members to join because it is such a privilege to work with such highly qualified people. Dr. Kepicki was mentioning Laura's award, and that's the caliber of people that are at R. Brown. Of course, I want to be selfish and say we're the absolute best, but in general, in Cabarrus County. So I'll read to you just a little bit because they did feature R. Brown in an article for the North Carolina Science and Math Center just recently. And part of that, it says, "This home to about 380 K5 students has only been a STEM magnet school since 2016-17 school year, but with the dedicated teachers that we have and inspired leadership that we have, McAllister was named a STEM School of Distinction in 2021." You get your recognition later, which is what just happened with us. And Ms. Cabanas and I were interviewed for that article, and so we talked in the article about how we're over the moon to learn that we had achieved that and that the hard work had paid off. We shared praise in that article for our teachers who helped make it happen. And some of the quotes there are, "After we made it to the site visit three years ago, R. Brown had applied previously, and we were not recognized as a STEM School of Distinction. That actually just inspired our teachers to do even more and even better. Our teachers devoted themselves to professional development, specifically applied learning outside of the classroom. They really focused on pulling together documentation that was strong and compelling. Has it been difficult for teachers and students to embrace the idea of STEM in every class, every day? No, not at all. Ms. Cabanas was quoted saying, 'We're extremely intentional about integrating STEM methodology into everything we do. We teach the four Cs: critical thinking, communication, creativity, and collaboration. And even for kids who aren't necessarily strong science kids, one of the Cs will resonate with them, allowing them to contribute.'" And I can't agree more. I would like to note that collaboration is a big piece, and that includes things that you might not normally think of as STEM, like English Language Arts and the arts. It's a mindset, and all of our teachers really embrace that and understand the importance of their contribution. We encourage students to correct their thinking based on new data, revise and share their thinking, and that reframing helps teachers and students see STEM as a way of thinking, not just a class. And I think that's important because that's a lifelong skill, reframing our thinking and updating it. When we were talking about one of our favorite things about STEM, and some of those came up. Right now, it's Shark Week, so you may see in some of the STEM schools all around Shark Week going on. I see Ms. McLean shaking her head because it's Shark Week at Beverly Hills as well. And just earlier in the year, Ms. Cabanas dissected a shark with our fifth-grade students. So there's all kinds of wonderful things happening, but my favorite was NASA Night. Again, I'll shout Ms. Cabanas's kudos because she got a partnership with Langley and NASA and brought STEM to R. Brown in a NASA way last spring, and we had NASA Night where all the students actually got NASA patches. So wonderful things going on, and we should be very proud in Cabarrus County Schools to have the caliber of people that we do, working with our children. My child was at R. Brown last year, has moved on, and I think it's really important to celebrate that for our children. I will introduce Ms. Nichol. She's our Assistant Principal in here with us. None of them wanted to say anything. Ms. Fane, who is a first-grade teacher with us, and Ms. Cabanas, who is our STEM facilitator. Thank you.
Thank you. A few notes I'd like to point out to our public. The inaugural Cabarrus County Futures Fair is coming up on October 17th at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center. This event will feature not only our Program Choice offerings for current students in Cabarrus County Schools, but also extend the fair to include career, college, and military options for our upcoming graduates. The Futures Fair will begin at 6:00 p.m., and information is available on the Cabarrus County Schools webpage. Online applications for our 2023-2024 Program Choice options will open on Monday, October 17th, and run through Friday, December 16th, with parental notification of acceptance during the week of February 1st, 2023. The online application link can be found by visiting our webpage at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us and clicking on the Program Choice icon in the Find It Fast box on our district webpage. Also this week, it's National School Lunch Week from October 10th through the rest of this week. The National School Lunch Program serves more than 30 million students each day, and the fun and creative campaign theme Peace, Love, and School Lunch highlights the importance of a healthy school lunch to a student's success, both in and out of the classroom. Special thanks to our Cabarrus County Schools School Nutrition Staff during this National School Lunch Week and all month for their amazing, dedicated effort to provide appealing nutritious school meals every day. Also, the Cabarrus Arts Council, which strongly supports a lot of the arts that we undergo here in Cabarrus County, is having a family show this Saturday, October 15th, at 2:00. There'll be a free craft from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and it's being held downtown in Concord. And I would ask anyone that is looking for something to do this weekend to support the Cabarrus Arts Council. So thank you very much for that. Next, I would like Dr. Bish to come up and speak to our board in regards to one of the requests last week in talking about our transportation and our bus driver fill and compensation comparison over the last couple of years. Dr. Bish?
Thank you, Dr. Kepicki. Last week, there was a request to look at some comparisons. These are, this is in your board docs. So with thanks to our Transportation Department, John Legrand assisted me, as did the Transportation Department, to kind of give you a bird's eye view. Best way we could think of to put this together was how many available buses. That doesn't mean that we need a driver on every single bus, but those were our available buses. In 17 and 18, as Art had shared with you previously, we had, every bus had a driver. And then you can see 18, 19, 19, 20, the number goes up. We had 10 new buses who were received. And then we skipped 2021, obviously, and then you can see 21, 22, and 22, 23. I also included the hourly average rate, beginning with 17, 18. We have our drivers who drive our regular routes, and then we have our drivers who drive for our exceptional children's buses. So you can see that over the course of this time, our salaries have risen. Our fill rate is not where we want it to be right now. We're still adjusting for 22, 23. We will submit that on the 15th, so that may adjust slightly. We continue to hire, and we continue to work with folks, putting them through the course, the roadwork, the background checks, all of the steps that need to be taken in order for them to be able to drive the buses. So this kind of gives you the thumbnail of, I think, what you were asking for when you asked for this information last week. So I want to be sure this has answered the question that was raised.
Board members, comments or questions? And I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments or questions. I think this speaks for itself that if you look at 21, 22 to 22, 23, we have increased their rates. And I just appreciate you getting this together for us so that we could see it on this graph. It helps tremendously. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I appreciate that too, but I remember years ago, and when I was, and it's been years ago, as a county commissioner, also with other companies, when we had what we call a critical MOS or a critical position, one time it was IT. You know, that was, nobody could get IT people. And when this happened, we put it as a critical, you know, critical position. And we temporarily did increases for that so we could get people. I mean, we jumped those salaries up at a really higher rate so we could get those people. And I mean, to me, we're at a critical point with bus drivers. When we're 40 drivers down, to me, that is critical. When we can't get these children to school and they're an hour to, you know, behind, I mean, that's affecting their education. So to me, we're at a critical point. I mean, it's not your, I mean, y'all are doing everything possible. Art's doing everything possible. And you know, these parents, I mean, we're getting the emails, but to me, that is critical. And that's my two cents.
Thank you. Ms. Blackwell?
So thank you for bringing this information to us. Is there any way that you could tell us? And I wanted, I was going to ask this to Art, I know he's not here. How many of our bus drivers are being utilized during the day, like as an eight-hour shift versus just driving the bus in the morning and in the evenings? Do we know?
Most of our drivers, and Mr. Legrand may be able to assist with this, I will tell you that this goes way back, and some of, with Carolyn, I have a little bit of history. There was a time when we only had a bus driver per route. They might drive two or three or four hours a day total. One of the reasons we have tiered routes is that drivers drive three routes in the morning and three in the afternoon so that they have a minimum of 30 hours a week and receive benefits. So that is really where we're at, is that most of our drivers are driving and receiving benefits. So they're, they drive morning, they have a gap of time in the middle of the day, and then they drive triple tiers in the afternoon. I don't know if that answers your question, John?
Yeah, and thank you for that, Dr. Bish. The 245 number you're seeing on this spreadsheet is full-time bus drivers. So they will have three, they will drive Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 in the morning, and then do the three-tier in the afternoon. So every one of those 245, 245 bus drivers do drive full-time in the morning, full-time in the afternoon.
And so you said that was 30 hours?
Yes, if 30 hours is the minimum, once you hit 30 hours, we are required to pay benefits. And so the goal was, years ago, to work with the tiered structure in order to ensure that when we can give someone benefits, and they have health, and they have sick leave, and they have annual leave, and they have retirement benefits, it helps with not only hiring, but it helps with retention. And so that was the purpose for doing that. So when we say that 245 are full-time, the minimum would be 30 hours. Some may be more, but the minimum would be 30 hours a week.
Yeah, and some may be more based on the length of their route. So you know, if I have a longer route than Dr. Bish does, and we're bus drivers, then I may drive 31, 32 hours, you know, just because it takes me that amount of time to be able to finish my routes.
Now, are we utilizing any of these bus drivers as like TAs during the day when they're not driving?
We, that's a tricky one. So we have, I think, one or two, we have gone back to looking at, not all of our TAs are 40 hours. So we did put out to all of our teacher assistants and to teachers and to anyone else in the system, working in the school, that if you hold a CDL, and we can work with your schedule for you to drive a bus and get additional hours. What we get into is because these are all classified hourly people, we get into overtime. We can't do that. And so we have worked out, we had a TA that was at one school, and please don't ask me which one tonight, but it was, the TA was 30 hours a week, okay? They worked five hours a day. And so we were able to find a very short route at that school only for an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon. The TA said that she would be glad to drive that, still had an active CDL and was clear, so we added that as a secondary job while they still stay under 40 hours a week. So we have been able to do that in a couple of instances. I think we have two or three that we've been able. Part of the problem is that years ago, all of our TAs were required to drive buses. That was part of the TA job. But most of them no longer hold a CDL because of turnover. Very few of them hold a CDL today.
So that wouldn't be something, moving forward, that we could kind of look at as adding more bus drivers as potential TAs? Because I know that that's something that we're having a shortage with, right?
Yes. We still have a shortage with TAs, and those that already have a CDL are very slim, few and slim.
And then I think my other question had to do with, so I've done a little research and realized that CMS is offering quite an extensive bonus to these bus drivers. What has that, what have you guys heard as far as that, as a retention? Are we gonna, from our bus drivers, that we're potentially going to have an issue with that moving forward?
There have been bus drivers that have left our district for that reason, and not only joined CMS, but some other counties that are paying more. But I will tell you, that hasn't been a huge exodus. You know, it is, there are some that may live closer to whatever county that they actually left and went to and were enticed by the money. actually left and went to, and were enticed by the money, you know, that they're paying more than us. But I would say that by and large, you know, we're, we're not losing, we don't have them running out the door to go get that, that bonus. But unfortunately, when we're competing sometimes to hire the ones that, that are choosing between us and another district, and haven't had a chance to work with our team and be satisfied with their job, which a lot of our bus drivers are, then unfortunately, in those cases, sometimes we're losing, you know, out to, to the counties that are, are the highest bidder.
Yeah. And I just, I don't know if that's something that we can, you know, discuss, because at this point, I realize that it's a struggle to get these bus drivers, period, and then much less want to lose any of the ones that we already have. So, that might be something that we need to talk about at some point. But thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Mr. Furr?
Thanks for the report, and, and we know this is a nationwide problem. This is not just Cabarrus County. And I got confidence that you guys will do whatever you have to do to get these kids to school, and we just got to work through it. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Walter?
Thanks also for the number. So, you're saying that the subs are not included in that number?
No.
Those are full-time bus drivers, where it says driver fill.
We also have some people that are in the office, sometimes that we put them on the road when we have to.
That, that's not including that. We do have planners and other personnel that are in the office that we'd have to deploy sometimes to, to fill in for a bus driver that's out. But that's not included in that 245.
And we haven't changed our bus routes? We're not changing any rules or anything like that? It's been the way it is, right?
There, as the bus routes, as we discover who is riding the bus and how many are on each bus, some of the buses, some of the bus routes have changed for efficiency. Some of them have been.
There's some school systems that said, hey, if you live within two miles of, of the school, you don't get a ride. We don't do that.
No.
So, we, we provide transportation.
That's correct.
To, to, so there are, there are some painful things that can be done if you had to. But the, I think I sent something to Michael, this is last week, I had a presentation more aviation perspective, but it was really reaching out to our veterans. And there's programs for veterans to really get our veterans to, to, to come to join our system and helping them to do so. I think that's probably something we should be continuing to look into. Those are my thoughts, thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandich?
So, what does it look like when a bus is going to be late? Can you just explain that? Like, we get a call, we get something, because I've gotten a few emails that say, like, a kid was out at the bus stop for an hour, waiting on the bus. And I, I think they would know that the bus is going to be late before that. So, can you tell us what happens there?
Yes, the, when a bus is going to be late, the planner of the, of the bus zone contacts the, the school, sends them an email and says, hey, bus 123 is going to be 45 minutes late. We have to do a double run, or whatever the case may be. At that point, the school has been instructed to reach out, to send a connect ed, or to send some type of communication to the parents to be able to, so that they are aware that this is, this bus is going to be late. And so, that's been the standard process, to say that that's happening every single time. As far as it being communicated from school to, to, to family, I don't know. But I can tell you that the planner does send that out every time that a bus is going to be late.
I did hear one suggestion in the community, and I'm just going to say it out loud. There was like a community-type transportation where moms got together and took shifts. You know, one week, this mom would transport all the kids to school just to kind of help through this bus crisis that we having right now, because I do agree with Board Member Carpenter, it is a crisis. The other thing I want to say is if there is a possibility, I know I said this last week, but to make sure that the drivers who are currently covering the, the gaps, if we can make sure that the salaries that we are not using goes to those bus drivers. I made that suggestion. I don't know if that's what's happening, but I don't know if that's been discussed. So, I'm going to make that suggestion again. The last thing I'll say is thank you so much. I truly appreciate what y'all doing. I know it's hard, but we wouldn't be doing what we signed up to do if we didn't ask these tough questions and put you, you know, on the spot like this. So, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm truly concerned right now where we're at with buses. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Sandich, there's no reason, no, no need to apologize. We're right there with you. I would say that, that when we talk about the drivers who may be picking up an extra route, they are paid extra in that that adds to their hours. So, they do receive pay for all, they're hourly. So, when they pick up extra routes, they're also paid extra. We haven't looked at that in terms of something beyond that, because our goal is to get that extra off of them by hiring drivers so that they're not picking up too much. So, yes, I agree with you, and, and it, it, it is, it is a big issue that we talk about a lot, and that we're looking at a lot.
Yeah, and, and Ms. Sandich, I want you to know, we're, we're not satisfied with the, the way transportation is going either, and we're going to continue to recruit and, and bring in as many bus drivers as we possibly can, because that's, that's the answer to our problem. It's just a matter of finding those bus drivers and hiring them.
Okay, just one more plug again. If there is an opportunity to utilize the salaries that are not being used right now for those bus drivers that are covering the gaps, I don't know where that discussion needs to be had, but I'm just encouraging it again.
Thank you.
Dr. Bish, I just have a quick question. We had talked about including in this any type of bonuses that have been given, or sign-on bonuses. We've had a little bit of discussion.
We have not, again. While we have this issue with bus driving, we have this issue with child nutrition, we have this issue with custodial, we have this issue with Kids Plus. So, the, the, you know, I, I, I hear clearly, we've got to get children to school. We also have to feed children. We also have to keep the building safe and clean. We also have to provide for those families who need before and after-school care so that their children can be in school. So, it's, it's, and it goes to the next item that I'm going to share with you. I think that the next item might help a little bit, if I could, when you're, when you're finished with this one.
We're good, you can move on.
Okay. So, I was, I, there was, I did this in this sequence for a reason, so I was a little thoughtful here. The question was asked by Ms. Carpenter last week. So, you see, I wasn't feeling well, but I was watching at home. See there, Ms. Carpenter, I was on you, about the salary study. So, I want to give you an update. This morning, Ms. Herndon and I signed a contract for the salary study. So, just to give you a little snapshot, we did a lot of work hunting who were reputable wage and comp study organizations that had worked in school systems in North Carolina. That was our parameters. We found three that our peers across the state would vouch for. I sent requests for RFP to all three, two responded. We got written, and then Ms. Herndon and I conducted teams meetings with both of those two. We asked for follow-up documentation from both of them, and then narrowed it to the one, and then asked for further documentation from the one. So, we signed an agreement with Evergreen Solutions, who has done work in Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, all over the country, specifically around school system wage and comp. They have worked with Chapel Hill Carboro for five or six years. They are currently doing a wage and comp study in Lincoln County. Their division for school systems is done by former educators. So, we felt very, very comfortable. We asked for sample documents of what they provide, and we were both very excited about what we saw. The work will begin next week, and it is approximately a three and a half month, because we have asked for complete, top to bottom, left to right, start over, and let's just look at everything. We didn't want a partial. Times have changed. We're in a competitive market. Our community is changing. We're going to have a competitive employment environment with some of the new businesses coming in, and we felt like this was a time to do a very deep, comprehensive study. So, it should be concluded, and we should have a report to you sometime about the end of January 1st of February. So, that's an update on that.
Thank you. Dr. Kapiki?
Last thing I have to say to you is to just update the board. We completed our data reviews with all of our principals this, these past two weeks. Dr. Roth, Sarah Reeves, John Legrand, myself, sat down with all of our principals as they reviewed all of their data points in their schools. And I can report to the board that, again, you should be very proud of the investment that your administrators and your teachers have in looking and assessing their schools, always looking for continuous improvement. I was very impressed by the presentations and the detail that our principals went into explaining their data. As Carl Sane reported a couple of weeks back, we are about five percentage points away from recovering some of that learning loss that we've been exposed to over the last couple of years. I was very impressed to see the detail that our principals went into, working with their teachers, to assess that situation and continue to move forward, and making sure that we are not only aware of some of that loss, but using the data to drive the instruction. So, again, I want to point out, and then I want to thank the teachers in the school system, because I want to say to them, as I go around and observe the classes and the schools, and see the engagement of the, the, the teachers in the classroom, and more importantly, the relationships that they're forming with our students, we should all be very proud of the teachers in our system. The Cabarrus County Schools has outstanding educators and do, they do a fantastic job with our students. So, I'm very proud to be a part of this system, and I'm very proud to be working with our teachers. And we all should be making sure that when we're out there and we see our teachers, that we thank them and, and tell them how grateful we are for the good work that they are doing, because they are doing a tremendous job in our school. So, I thank them, and I thank our administrators for the detail they put into those reports. And that's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And since my reminder has went off several times very loudly, I failed to read the certificate for the anti-bullying month, so I'm going to just do that real quick and back up. Cabarrus County Schools is committed to providing every student with a safe, welcoming school environment, free from bullying, harassment, and discrimination. As educators, we will work together to create a culture of respect and understanding for all students, staff, and parents. All board members signed this certificate. I pledge to be a champion against bullying by choosing kindness, being a good role model for our school and community, being respectful of others and treating them the way I would want my family to be treated, standing up against bullying and cyberbullying when and where it is brought to my attention, providing support to those who are involved in bullying, harassment, or discrimination. Signed by each member of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. And thank you, guys. And with that, I will move to, sure, absolutely, go right ahead.
Just for point of clarification, the general statute in North Carolina in regards to use and operation of school buses, it's a one and a half mile rule. So, you're not obligated to, you're not required to provide transportation for any pupil that lives within one and one-half miles of a school, where that child is enrolled. Again, another strength of our school system is we bus any child that wants to come to our system. That presents some challenges, but that's a challenge that we welcome. And again, we, we provide that transportation for all students in the, in the county. So, I think Cabarrus County Schools, this board, and the Transportation Department have set a very high expectation that we continue to honor making sure that we get kids to school, no matter the distance. And we're intentional in that, and we will continue to do that. And, and I do understand the challenges that presents, and I do understand some of our parents frustrations with our transportation system. And I would just ask for your patience. We are diligently working towards getting ourselves in a better situation. So, I thank you for all of your support there. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And we will move to 6.03, our Board Attorney comments. We'll have Mr. White to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Kapiki. One of the things that I was tasked with last week is to look at and make some suggested changes to 3210, and that was sent out. And, you know, as many times as I may look at this, I do find some typos. In other words, parent slash guardian is, is done a couple of times. I need to, I'll clean that up. But I was tasked with adding the idea about the anonymous. That is not in here. I can work on that. I don't, I don't know what the board, if the board still wants it to be anonymous. But I do want to point out that in the, under B, parental and petition objection, that is on page two of eight, if we can scroll down to there. Oh, you just passed it. Highlight, there we go, thank you. That the person would be a parent slash guardian or Cabarrus County citizen over the age of 18 years of age will identify him slash herself and may request that his slash her name and student's name will remain confidential when submitting. So, the idea there is you can do it known, or you could do it confidential through the principal, so that that is in there. And then, to be consistent with our other policies, is what I was told, is that we don't have, well, we have parent slash guardian, so that's what we, that's what is, that's the update there. There's some parent slash guardian. And if you go to the next highlight, which is subsection C, and you can see where I fat-fingered quite a bit, or excuse me, it's not there, but on my, on my edits, I fat-fingered parent slash guardian a lot there. So, I'm, that, I'm glad here it doesn't have it. It is required that before the request for reconsideration form is submitted, the petitioner meet with the principal to discuss the concerns, and that the request for reconsideration form may be reviewed on the Cabarrus County School website. That is, the Cabarrus County School website, the intent with having the website there is to have a hyperlink as best we can, so a parent or somebody, or a guardian can click on that and click right over. Then, if you go to the next highlight, which is miscellaneous, this will address another concern of the board, was that if the material is such that should it not be removed from circulation pending review? And this is pulled from the concerns that was also raised in regards to if the material is pornographic, if it has sexual acts or content, or is harmful to minors, that is defined under 3226, that it could be removed if it falls into those categories. If it does not fall into those categories, then it would not be pulled out of circular, or should not, would not be removed from circulation pending review, and the decision of the reconsideration committee or the school, school improvement team. So, you have that there. So, that would address each of the, the concerns that the board asked me to work on since last week, and this is what we have so far. So, it is at the pleasure of the board right now.
Thank you, Mr. White. So, I know we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting. We had discussion about this being returned to the policy committee, but I wanted each of you to entertain us sending it back, actually, to the Literature and Supplemental Materials Committee, because this is, has actually come from the policy committee. And we, as y'all all know, most of you do know, that they are looking at, you know, hundreds of policies at a time, so that's very time-consuming. And that's why committees are created, is to take care of a specific, you know, item or issue that we're, we're dealing with or addressing. So, just in knowing that, that some of these modifications have been made, it's been tweaked. I would like for it to go back. We've set a meeting date for October the 24th, and with that, I'm going to open up the floor for discussion, and I'll begin with Ms. Sandich.
So, I understand that it'll just go back to the Literature and Supplemental Materials Committee for a review of these added changes. I don't have any questions with that.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
So, I guess that was my same question. So, we're going to bring it back to that committee, and that committee is going to give us the recommendation for second read, is that what we're talking, are we going to go back to first read?
We will just.
How are we going to handle that?
Yeah, we'll just put it on for approval. So, once it goes back to them, and, and that's, that is taken care of there, that it will still come back to the board in November for a final vote.
But are the changes substantial enough where it should have a first read and allow for the public to input?
So, if you read your board policy, you know that board, the board can adopt the policy at any given time, especially.
Sure, I understand. I'm more, I'm more concerned about making sure our public has enough time to digest this as a whole and give us feedback to it before we go down to the final time.
We'll place it on board docs as soon as it comes out of policy, out of the committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Furr?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Could you, you know, tell us who again is on that, the board members that are going to be on that committee?
So, as of now, Ms. Adcock is still a current member. I have removed Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Blackwell. I've asked you and Mr. Walter if you would like to be added, and I think both of you have said yes, correct?
Okay.
And I will chair that last meeting. Are we good?
Before we go further, that would be four.
Actually, it is. So, one of you need to, it is exactly that, since I'm actually on there now.
Somebody's got to do noses, or?
We'll, how about we'll, we'll decide afterwards, it's fine. I'll, I'll make that decision as board chair. That's fine. Good deal. I had an alternate, but they both accepted, so, all right, good deal. Well, we will take care of that, no problem. Ms. Blackwell, any comments or questions? Ms. Blackwell, any comments or questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to reiterate that, again, the anonymous piece on it is not... You didn't add that to the policy at this point, right?
That's correct.
OK. So that is still... I'm just making it clear that that is still a concern that I have as we're moving forward when you do bring this back to the Literature and Supplemental Material Committee.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you very much. Now, one of the things, Jay, pull that back down a little bit. I wanted... I had a question. Keep going, keep going. Where was it? Wait a minute. Let's see. It requires down a little bit more.
What are you looking for? I might be able to get you there.
Well, I will... Get me there. OK, there it is. The parent, the guardian, or a Cabarrus County citizen over the age of 18. So any citizen then can do it. If they're... It doesn't say taxpayer, but any citizen over the age of 18 could do a form, then you're basically saying, then, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
OK, that's good. Because, I mean, basically, they've paid for these books. That's correct, then.
That... There has got to be some scenario that somebody has not paid for the books, but I think that's so far down the line that would be... Because even if you're... If you have no real property, if you have no personal property, then some taxes that you're paying, income taxes or whatever, it filtered to the state, back to down here that got... So you're right.
But, I mean, yes, somebody... I mean, because, well, I mean, you've paid... You buy groceries, so you've paid sales tax, so some of that would... But that, I mean, that's good. Was that on the original, or did you just put that in? I know we had a big discussion on that, and I know they put parent, guardian, and then they put employee because there was discussion at that meeting.
There was discussion at the committee meeting about whether it should be parent and a Cabarrus County employee.
Employee, but they didn't have...
Or whether it should be a parent and somebody that's over 18. And I was instructed to do a parent or somebody over 18.
Oh, I mean, I like that part because that gets in... Because there's a lot of people that aren't a parent or a guardian. I like the 18, so that's good. One of the things I would like to state is that the only reason I originally wanted to be on the committee was on October the 10th, 2021, Ms. Blackwell, I mean, Ms. Holly, our chairman, sent an email to us with... From Nancy Andrews with a picture of child pornography. And I, after seeing that, I was shocked that that material could possibly be in our libraries because I know we've got some wonderful, wonderful staff, and this stuff had to have accidentally got there. And so that made me very interested. And, you know, when our chairman decided to possibly set up this committee, that was the only reason I wanted to be on this committee. That was the only reason I decided that I would like to be on the committee. Because I was shocked to see this even happen. So this was one reason that I wanted. You have addressed the concerns that I have seen, and I think this has been addressed. I have no problem with it going back to that committee. And I have no problem with you changing. That's fine and dandy with me. I have not gone on any kind of public type of network or anything. Now, there has been a letter sent to our board, and it stated that I had said that I wanted to ban books. That is definitely untrue. I've never said I wanted to ban books and that I didn't want the thing to go back to policy. You have stated... What you stated is fine. That is fine. And one thing, I definitely don't want this policy to be anonymous. I think if somebody wants something done, they should be willing to put their name and put their money where their mouth is. So I definitely am opposed to that. And I feel that you have addressed the thing about our citizens because I feel like the taxpayers have paid for those items and that they should be able to, you know, get their... You know, they've paid for it. And so I did not want to do... I just want to make sure that we do follow the policy. And I just want to thank the committee that I served on, and I appreciate all the hard work they put into it. And I'm glad to see us send it back to them. And thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on the committee as well. Ms. Adcock?
I don't really have any questions, just I'm glad to see it go back to the committee and us to have another conversation. I think the last time we met, we had really good conversations. We were able to listen and ask questions and have, you know, agree to disagree on some things, but I think it was very healthy to be able to speak to people in the community and get their take on it as well. So I'm glad to hear that's going to happen.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. And, you know, with this committee having several of our principals and media specialists, you know, there are parents, there's a lot of good representation in there, and that's where a lot of the discussion came out about how cumbersome it would become about it being anonymous, you know? So that was a really good piece that came out of that committee meeting. Anything else that you've got for that?
None.
All right, thank you. OK, board members, we will move to 7.01, committee reports. Anything from our board members? And I will begin with Ms. Adcock.
Don't have any comments, just our board interns are here tonight, so everybody be on their best behavior.
Ms. Carpenter, any?
Not at this time, and I'll try to behave myself.
Ms. Blackwell?
No, I don't have any reports at this time.
Mr. Furr?
No.
Mr. Walter?
No.
Ms. Sandage?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
OK, thank you. We'll move to 7.02, the stabilization grant, and we'll have Mrs. Sarah Reeves and Ms. Trina Wenzel to the podium, please.
And Ms. Trina Wenzel will be making that presentation this evening. Thank you for being here, Mrs. Wenzel.
Trina, will you key up, please? Yes, there we go. Good, OK. So this is in regard to the North Carolina Childcare Stabilization Grant funds that were set aside in 2021 for... Governor Cooper set this aside to hopefully stabilize childcare programs because obviously with the pandemic, many childcare programs closed, could not reopen, and then those that were, were struggling to maintain staff, as we were as well. So this was a grant to hopefully help with the recovery for childcare programs. And Cabarrus County Schools owns and operates Mary Frances Wall as a childcare center. And so those... These are the two big requirements for the grant, that you had to be licensed through the North Carolina Division of Early Education, and then you had to participate in the subsidized childcare assistance program, which is run through the Department of Social Services for families who need assistance with help funding childcare. So you had to participate in both of those programs, which Mary Frances Wall does. So at the end of August, we were notified that we had received those funds. In the initial allotment of this grant, public school systems for childcare programs were not eligible to apply because as soon as it came out, we tried to apply, but we could not apply at that point. And so later on, those avenues opened up, and that's when we applied. And we were awarded... Our first payment was actually last month for the $90,000, and we will... We recertified just last week, and hopefully we'll find out in the next week or two. And then this reassessment process that's going on is something that the... As the grant phases out, because it will end next August or September, but it is starting to phase out, so funds are kind of being decreased. And they were based basically on your participation in the childcare assistance programs and different types of factors as far as the number of staff you have, the number of children you serve, those types of things. And they have a rubric that they develop to determine kind of the amounts. Right now, Mary Frances Wall Center provides childcare for nearly 300 preschool children here in Cabarrus County. And those... The two kind of groups of children that we serve are school system employees, children or grandchildren, and they pay tuition and they can be part of the school system program. It is... Or as part of Mary Frances Wall, it is a greatly reduced cost to school system employees. And if you know the cost of childcare in Cabarrus County, really anywhere right now, it's... Mary Frances Wall is greatly reduced for school system employees as a benefit. And we house then children with disabilities. So it is a blended program. It's an inclusion program where we have children without disabilities right beside of children with disabilities and children ages, we start at three and run until children enter kindergarten. They can be participants there. We have about 30 teachers, 25 teacher assistants. Then we have speech, occupational, physical therapists, and specialized teachers. And then we offer those child find activities for Cabarrus County. If a family has a child that they have concerns about development, that is offered to the community at no cost. And all of the services for our children with disabilities are offered at no cost, the specialized services. So this is something that it is a wonderful benefit for school system employees. It is a very costly program in the fact that it is very specialized. And we are actually the only program like this that is owned and operated by a school system. We're the only one in the state. So we feel very honored to receive the grant funds, but it is extremely hard work, as you can imagine. You've heard about special education and trying to remain open. You'll see here, trying to remain open during the pandemic was extremely difficult. As you all know, all the rules that everyone had to follow during the pandemic double that, and that's about what you had for childcare because it was just incredible. The rules came out, you know, for schools, and then there was a whole nother set of rules for childcare that came out. As you know, children put everything in their mouth and they share everything. And so when you were talking about COVID, how do you manage that? If you've ever tried to wrangle a three-year-old, you know that it is virtually impossible. So those were big pieces that... And there were so many things, so much more cleaning, so much more... We say we wash our hands a million times a day in an average year, and it was about 2 million during the pandemic, we felt like. So all of those kinds of things that really kind of inflated our costs during the time. And that was part of hopefully the, you know, the funds for this grant you can use for two ways, is that fixed cost, which we can use supplies, materials, those types of things. And then the other part of that is the bonus piece that we can use to hopefully retain staff because it definitely took a toll. And as you can imagine, you know what COVID was like trying to keep teachers in classrooms with young children. It was even more at times because, like I said, they like to share everything but their toys. So, you know, that's kind of where we land, and we are sick a lot oftentimes. So our goal for our funds is that we want to upgrade some of our equipment, which it is very rare for us to have money to do equipment and things of that nature because we do not get ADM funds like K-12 does. We have to operate off of our tuition and off of our special ed dollars. So to have money that we can upgrade equipment is wonderful. So right now, we have the $55,000 that we got for fixed cost, and like I said, you can use it for a lot of those things. We also are hoping to do some professional development with another... A couple of other agencies to offer mental health support to families in our community as well. And then our employee retention and appreciation bonus. We hope this is our plan, is to give a $1,000 bonus to our Mary Frances Wall childcare staff who are employed on December 21st and then May 15th. And then hopefully, as the grant continues, we will be able to provide some bonus based on the funds that we receive. And like I said, right now, we don't know what, you know, that amount, how that amount will be. The state will kind of decide that, like I said, as they're phasing out the grant, there are different rubrics that they use. So the two pieces are that fixed cost and then our employee retention. So we're very excited to offer that to the staff who have worked extremely hard, so many during the pandemic, and of course, continue to do so. But this is such a nice gift for them. Questions?
Thank you, board members. Comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
So thanks for the presentation. No questions, but I will make a statement. My daughter went to Mary Frances Wall for a year, and it was absolutely wonderful, the ability that she had just based off of being in that environment. I don't think people understand how much of a gem that is to our county and to our state, it sounds like. I take that back. I do have a question. What do we use that big building for? Because I always go through the side building. What's in that big building?
Nothing right now.
Is... Can we use it for some? No? OK. Just was wondering.
You would not want to go in that building.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I also hear nothing but good things about Mary Frances Wall and the staff that you have over there. How many staff do we have and how many students?
We are licensed under childcare for 299. You can house that many at any given time. We serve probably in a week about 500 to 600 kids in and out of the building, but, you know, for various therapies and different things like that. But as far as the childcare piece, we can house 299. If you get 300, you have to have backup generators. So we stay at 299.
That's our limit. Got it? And staff for that? Staff?
How many? We have roughly, for classroom staff, about 60.
And what percentage of the students pay the tuition? Or is everybody getting...
We, out of our 299, around 100, 110, 15 varies.
Are there discount programs available for them? Is that...
I'm sorry.
Are there discount programs or grants available for them as well?
Well, our fee is $125 a week. That is all they pay to begin with. And pretty much right now, the market rate in Cabarrus County is over $300 a week for childcare. So it's at $125. And they are eligible... We do have school system employees who are wonderful foster parents and things of that nature, and that's where the DSS subsidy, that if they're eligible for subsidized childcare, then we take those subsidy funds. And a lot of childcare centers choose not to do that. It's, you know, it's everyone's choice. They can make... Choose those dollars if they... It's entirely up to them. But we do have a lot of school system employees that access the subsidy program.
You guys are running a wonderful program, and I thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Furr?
Thanks for the presentation, and I thank you for what you guys do. It takes special people to do what you guys do, so I appreciate it.
Ms. Blackwell?
Absolutely agree with Tim. I have toured the Mary Frances Wall Center multiple times. You guys are fantastic, and the children are so happy. You guys are fantastic, and the children are so happy there. So thank you again for everything you do.
You are welcome.
Ms. Carpenter.
And again, thank you, and I enjoyed your Special Olympics. I even participated in it. It was wonderful, and hopefully one of these days we'll get you off that 601 that's in the plan. So hopefully we can do that. And again, kudos on getting that grant, and hopefully, I'm always, always trying to get those grants.
Yes.
But that is wonderful. And again, you do a wonderful, magnificent job. I toured and looked through all the rooms and everything, and the children, boy, you come through those gates, they're just right there on you, and they love it. They love you, they just love you to death. And y'all do a wonderful, wonderful job.
Thank you.
Ms. Adcock.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and for what you do for our kids. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. It is certainly my honor.
Thank you. Dr. Kapicki.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Wenzel, I just want to say thank you for your presentation this evening. And I want our folks to understand, one of our long-term goals is to expand the excellence that exists at Mary Frances Wall. I've had a lot of extended conversation with Mrs. Wenzel, and I won't go into a lot of detail now, but long-term, we're looking at expanding that and offering more preschool in our system. It is a goal of ours to do. But you are certainly a champion of students and you're a merchant of hope for all of our kids, and I thank you for all of your great work, as well as your staff. Truly special, as our board has pointed out, and another point of excellence and a point of pride in our system. So thank you for all your great work.
Thank you, Trina. Okay, next board members, we will move to presentations, and we will begin with 8.01, public comments made by board members, and we'll have Mr. White back to the podium.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Kapicki. One of the things that I was tasked with last week is to apprise the board, to talk to the board about public comments made by board members in different formats. And one thing that I would call your attention to is 2220, and that's the official spokesperson, school spokesperson. And what this, in reading 2220 and also looking at the School Board of Ethics, as well as the Code of Ethics, and what you're looking at is, the spokesperson of the school board is, in this case, Mrs. Grimsley, Madam Chair, is the chairperson or the superintendent. And then what happens is, when comments are made by each one of you individually, the question is, are you making that comment in your individual capacity? Or are you making your comment as an official, as a, in your official capacity? And what 2220 talks about, second sentence, is any person speaking in an official capacity will conduct his or her assignment from the standpoint of the best interests of the board, the school district, or community. You're getting to it. I'll let you catch up. Underboard policies. Policy manual, bottom left, you got your arrow just right at it. There you go. And then go to 3,000, or excuse me, 2,000, you're right. And then at the bottom, at 2220, next one down, there you go. Okay, and then the second line, any person speaking in an official capacity will conduct his or her assignment from the standpoint of the best interests of the board, the school district, and the community, not as representative of his or her own personal ideas or feelings. So the question is, when you're making a comment to whomever it may be, to whatever group it may be, to whatever organization it may be, are you speaking in your official capacity? Are you speaking in your individual capacity? And that resonates for what is being said, what is being commented on as it relates to, does it tie this board's hands? In other words, if one of you were to speak and say, in November's meeting, we're going to discuss X and we're going to do Y. Well, if that hasn't been discussed amongst the board members, or at a public meeting, or not even amongst, if it hasn't been discussed at a public board meeting, then you can't tie, or you shouldn't commit this board to doing something that the board hasn't discussed. So those things that you need to look at and be careful about in regards to when you're speaking, again, what's your role, what's your, who you're speaking to, and then what's the content about what you're talking about? Has it been discussed by this board? Has it not been discussed by this board? Is it a topic of conversation? And when you are, so you can get closer to the line, you can get closer to the gray area, as to, are you speaking in your official capacity? Are you still speaking about, from your individual point of view? So that's where we're talking about public, that's what y'all are talking about, public comments. And you're also looking at the Code of Ethics in regards to making certain that what you are speaking is correct information, that this board has made a decision, whatever that decision may have been. Does that?
Thank you. I will open the floor for discussion. I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
Okay, so I'm just going to speak and just make a statement. I feel like as a board of education and one of integrity, that we stand by the policies. I mean, we do represent the policies of this school system. We develop them, we vote on them. And by, you know, representing those policies to our CCS staff and students, we have to be in line with them. And I think when board members themselves don't follow these policies, you know, how can the school system, you know, the people in our school system really trust our guidance as the governing entity? I think when we decide as an individual board member to speak to media or any other organization without contacting our board chair, or talking to someone first, and just go out and say whatever we want, I think that we're not leading by example. And I don't think that Ms. Black will follow this policy in her comments to the media on numerous occasions.
Ms. Carpenter.
I have to agree with Denise. I mean, we, sometimes you, we have policies, we expect our employees to follow those policies, and we should set an example by doing the same thing. And we expect them to do the same thing by following the policies. And sometimes, even though it may be, as our attorney just said, maybe that little gray area there, and we, you know, you just have to, and it may be the perception, maybe it was okay, but it may not look okay. And you've got to be very careful sometime. And so you just have to be, and our chairman, I know many times I've called the superintendent or even our PR person and said, hey, I got a call from such and such. And I've let them just handle it, instead of me saying anything. Just sit on your hands and do nothing. And sometimes that's the best thing to do, just not to do anything at all. And when you're running, sometimes that is the best thing to do, just keep your mouth shut. Thank you very much.
Mr. Furr, I'm going to let you go next, and we'll let Ms. Blackwell be last, okay?
Yeah. Well, based on what Mr. White just spoke to us and read to us, you know, and after I reviewed what was said, I still think that it was an opinion, her opinion, it was not the opinion of the board. And, you know, we're in tough times, and people are, you know, during election times, people are running for office, and I think each person on this board is really passionate about what they believe. They're really, you know, I've got, I've known Laura now for probably eight years. I know how passionate she is about what she's doing. I know how passionate most of these board members are. They have intent of what's best for kids, and sometimes, you know, it's put in situations that, in her regard, that me personally, from just looking at it, I don't see anything wrong with it. And another thing before, you know, and I've told Ms. Grimsley, and that, you know, going back to even, we talked about Ms. Sandage, you know, going back, you know, I wish I'd have never voted for it. I think we need to just move on and quit bringing so much attention to the board, and let's put the attention on where it belongs. And so that's just my opinion.
Mr. Walter.
I kind of agree with Tim on some of the things that he said. The focus really needs to be on our teachers and the good things we're doing as a school system. I mean, part of this we did to ourselves. I mean, the board here voted to allow, to read this stuff, and that's going to bring attention to us. He didn't mention policy 2100, which I think is even more critical to this thing, because yeah, she's in official capacity, but that's an opinion, or opinion or decision of the assignment. And at 2100 says clearly, in the second sentence or third sentence, the board is not to be bound in any way by any statement or action on the part of an individual board member, except when such action is the specific instruction of the board. And I know this board did not give Laura specific instructions to do these, to have those comments. It seemed very clear it was on her own. You could go to the ethics and think of some of the things here too, but, you know, if you look through some of those, the comments, some of that has to do with allowing someone to, their free expression, even if we don't agree with it, and may not agree with it. I mean, it's clear, but doesn't give her, she still has the right to express herself. But keeping in mind that yes, it can have an effect on the board as a whole. So, you know, we've expressed our concerns, Laura's given us a statement, and I'd like to move on as well.
Ms. Sandage.
Can you come back to me?
Well, I was just, Ms. Blackwell's the last one, and I just wanted to make sure that all the board members got to speak before I let her make a statement.
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Ms. Blackwell.
So, Mr. White, in your legal opinion, have I done anything to break policy?
In my legal opinion, what I would say is, you've got to look at whether you spoke during the official, in your official capacity. And what I read, or excuse me, what I heard, you kept on using references of "I," and you kept on saying that this, what I was doing and what my position was. You did mention a couple of times, when you switched over to the literature committee and talking about the literature committee, you did talk about "we," but it was specific about the literature committee.
So, in your, also, your opinion, I know one of the things that we asked specifically was if there was a difference between the initial conversation for censure with Ms. Sandage versus this potential conversation as well. Could you explain if there was a difference and what that difference could potentially be?
When I heard what you said in regards to your interview, it was things that have been consistent with what was in the literature committee discussion, as well as what your original point of views were. And from the meeting at the, about the, when the book was read, about the comments that were made by the board members, it was consistent with those concerns about that material. From what, in reviewing the topic as it relates to Ms. Sandage, that was a topic about substitutes and some information that was provided to the media that was not correct. And I think it was discussed, or it was provided to the media on a Friday, and I believe that Dr. Kapicki and Mrs. Grimsley were trying to get the message out that we do have substitutes, we do have people that are taking, teaching classes, we do have matters or people that can follow up with that. I know that Mrs. Sandage then brought up a Forbes article, that she was mentioning the Forbes article, so that's the difference between the two.
Okay. So I think one of the things that I'm trying to understand, and this is kind of why I wanted to go last in this, is if you guys are upset with the content of what I said, or are you upset in the platform in which I used to say it? And I say that because on September 20th, I also did an interview with Mark Garrison, in which I also voiced exactly the same concerns. And I was introduced by him as a board member, which is a fact. Steve Bannon introduced me as a vice chair, which is a fact. And the information that I shared on both of those programs was exactly the same information that I have shared all along. I believe, in my opinion, that this potential discussion of censure is politically motivated. I believe that I am trying to be silenced by fellow board members from stating my opinions and my positions on matters that I have addressed in the community multiple times. In fact, I also believe that it is my duty and my job as an elected official to make sure that in my capacity, the community knows exactly where I stand on these issues. I think I have done nothing but do my job as an elected official, and I stand firm on the topics that I discussed in both of those interviews. We do that in board meetings, and we do it in public. Whether I'm a candidate or an elected official, it is my duty to make sure that the public is informed about my issues and where I stand.
Ms. Sandage.
Thank you. So I have a question about the official spokesperson. How do we determine who officially speaks for us if every single one of us can speak our minds?
What I would tell you is that when you're talking about a topic that this board has made a decision on, or made a decision on, or is discussing, that would come from Madam Chair, or the chairperson, or Dr. Kapicki. If it is, if it is your own personal belief, I think you need to try and delineate it as clearly set it out. And how clear that could be, I would have to look at whatever you said to say, did you step over the line or not? But I think if you clearly are saying, I, my concern is, I am trying to do this, I think that stakes out your position as an individual, not as speaking on behalf of the board.
And who determines if it's something that the board is continually discussing or doing something about?
That would be, I think I understand your question. I would say the board members. The board members, you would be able to make a choice as to whether you believe whatever statements were made were over the line or not.
Okay. So if the board is continually discussing something, has identified a process for that something to be addressed, then does that not need to be discussed in a public capacity by an individual board member? Because it's continuing discussion of the board, and it's, we've already identified how we're going to address it, and I hope I'm making sense, because you're looking at me like I got.
You had a lot of pronouns in there.
Right. So what I'm trying to understand is if the board is discussing something, and it is board business, that we are, we've identified we're going to do something about it, we put a plan in place that's been discussed, you are saying that individual board members can go on public shows and discuss that? Did I hear that correctly?
Right. The board has made a decision that we are going to, let's see here, we got on the consent agenda tonight. If you're going to talk about, the board has put on the consent agenda to be able to talk about bus cameras and equipment, and we need to talk about that because it's very important. And I think it's important because the safety of our children is paramount, and we need to update our camera equipment. I think that's perfectly acceptable to be able to talk in that manner. If you were to say, at next month's meeting, we're going to buy this piece of property so we can put a new high school or elementary school on that piece of property, and it's going to be done because we have overcrowding at all these different schools, I would tell you that that would be more inappropriate, because that's something that has not been brought up to the board for discussion. So it is So, it's, it is easier to look at it and say, did you step over the line or not than to say, if you're not, if you don't want to step over the line, you follow what Mrs. Carpenter has said is don't say anything. If you, if you are trying to stay, my words, stay in your lane, then you've got to be very careful about what you're saying. So, I know that's not clear, about as clear as mud, but the idea is, are you hamstringing this board? Or are you on a topic that hasn't been discussed? Or are you, are you misrepresenting what the board's decision was? Okay? So, whatever the consent agenda last month, if you say, oh, that really didn't happen, we're actually going to do something else. That's problematic.
So, I understand correctly that all seven of us could go to the media. We can be the official spokesperson as long as it's already been discussed and decided upon by the board. And I just, I just want us to be very clear about what we're saying in this. That's what I understand.
Okay. So, you would be talking on your own behalf. The board has made this decision. So, I would not say you're the official spokesperson of the board. You can say, at last month's meeting, at this month's meeting, the board has discussed this and we have approved it. That's completely different than to say, this is what we are going to do. This is how we're going to act. The board is going to pass whatever that has not been brought before the board. That is a problem because you're providing misinformation to the public.
Gotcha. And when we go back to, I think it was January 10th from what I'm seeing, where we had the meeting about me and my concern for substitutes. And you just now said that I was wrong in my, in my statements, correct?
What I'm saying is that from what happened on Friday, whatever that Friday was, it was apparently releasing information to the public that we did not have substitute teachers to cover for teachers that were out. And that information from what I was told and what was discussed at this board was not, not fully correct. When you came to the meeting on that Monday night, you, and also I believe in the interview or that you had, you mentioned you were also talking about a Forbes article that there was a shortage across the nation. But I know that if I remember correctly, not only did Dr. Kupicki make a statement, but also Dr. Bish came up and said, we do have substitute teachers. So, that was, that was the issue in that regards.
So, but this is your opinion and your opinion only as an attorney, that I didn't talk to Dr. Kupicki, which is what I referenced in that interview. That's your opinion and your opinion only. We didn't go to a court of law to determine if that happened or not in front of a jury of my peers. You're saying that I'm wrong based off of your interpretation of what I did. I just want to understand that fully and correctly.
Well, I will, let's get the article and we can go, go through it piece by piece. So, that way we can look at it and make certain that your interpretation and the way I look at it is the same, whether you agree with me or disagree.
Okay. But you've indicated publicly that I was wrong, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, board members. Would you like to make a statement?
If it's okay. I also wanted to add something. Keisha, I just want to tell you that you were 100% right when we spoke and you had the opportunity to speak about that, that you can speak to whoever you want to, to speak to in the media. That is part of our job as elected officials to do that. And when you said that, I just want you to know that I completely agreed with you on that. And I just didn't want that to go unnoticed. I think that we have to be extremely careful in how we use this Policy 2220 and all of these other policies moving forward. I think honestly that we need to probably have this Policy 2220 sent back to the policy committee for review because it is very vague. And that has been expressed multiple times, that this policy is extremely vague. I do not want anyone to have to feel as though their First Amendment rights are being impeded upon. We should not be doing that to each other as a board. We should have the opportunity to speak to whatever source and outlet that we choose. That is our right to do that as an elected official. And as someone that is a candidate running for office, we should also not be impeded from speaking to the public because we are members of the board already. These are, these are serious issues that I think need to be addressed by the policy committee and moving forward, making sure that we have clarification on the reasons why these policies exist and making it very clear when they should be used and when they should not be used.
I'm going to let the board members have one more opportunity at a comment. And if we'd like to send this back to the policy committee, I just need a consensus tonight and I'll start with Ms. Sandage at this point in time.
I said something about this already. It's very vague and it doesn't give us any indication as to who, what, when, where, or how, or why. And I'll add by saying, Laura, I wish you would have had the same idea on January 10th when you attempted to censor me. It would have been good to be able to hear that from you then as opposed to now when you're being questioned. So, thank you very much for acknowledging that. Also, Tim, thank you very much for acknowledging that your attempt to censor me on that night was probably not a good idea as well. I appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Walter, any comments or questions?
I don't have any further comments. A school spokesman policy hadn't been looked at since 2017, so it's probably a good idea to look at.
Mr. Furr? Thank you. Mr. Furr?
No, I don't, I don't have any problem. We're sending it back.
Ms. Carpenter.
I have to agree with some other people. You know, when you go get to be censored, you look at it a different way, don't you? And I think that that's, that's, that's what happens. You're ready to point your finger at somebody, but then when that finger gets pointed at you, you say, huh, I don't like that very much, do you? But I tell you, I hate that. And, and I don't want to see us all fighting. When we work together, we can get a lot more accomplished. And that's, that's what I, I would like to see happen is let's, let's all work together. We can, we can do a lot, but we're supposed to be working for the children and let's do that and let's not fight among, among ourselves. And I, I think it's an excellent idea. Let's, let's put this thing going back to the policy. As you all know, I've been here a long, long time. I've seen this thing go back and forth, back and forth. And we used to be able to speak and we did say, this is what I think. This is my opinion. And when you do clarify that loud and clear, that it is what I think, and then we didn't feel bad when the media called us and said, hey, I want to do an interview with you on this. We were, we felt good about doing that and the media felt good about calling us. So, let's send it back. Let's make this happen and, and get it right this, this, this go around. And so, when elections come or when they don't come, then we don't feel jeopardized and, and then we won't be fighting among ourselves or trying to, to pit ourselves against each other.
Thank you. Ms. Adcock?
Well, I agree too. It needs to be sent back to the policy committee. And I think that in the past, under my understanding, was that we did not have the right to go out and speak to the media. And that was after the meeting with Ms. Sandage in January. So, you know, I'm still going to stick by what I said. I have no political reason to say what I say and I'm not running for anything. I'm not trying to represent anybody. This is my personal opinion and I am a leader of integrity. I am not going to say or do anything that is going to represent this board in a bad light.
Thank you. Mr. White, I was going to say, since this is going to go back to the policy committee and I think they actually meet the end of this month, so that'll be great since it has actually not been reviewed since 2017 and that's over five years. So, that's even before some of us got back on the board. So, can you take care of that, please?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Take a point of privilege to address.
Absolutely.
So, I just want to take a point of privilege to address Ms. Sandage and her comments. And I just want to reiterate that I agreed with the fact that you are able to speak to whomever you want to based on your First Amendment right. However, the difference, as pointed out, was that I was not putting out misinformation. I was putting out information that was truth.
Okay. I'm going to ask, I'm sorry to stop. One more time, if there's any more interruptions, I'm going to have to remove you all from the room, okay? We, the cameraman cannot hear it. Nobody's audible up here to the viewing audience. So, please, no more comments, okay? Finish, please.
That was all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like a point of privilege as well.
Okay.
We really and truly need to move forward and stop being childish. If we're going to hold one person accountable, we need to hold everybody accountable. As I've stated before, I came in here and was sidelined by a censor that had already been discussed and decided upon. If I have information, when I talk to the superintendent and I get that information and I feel some type of way about that, you're right. I have every right to say what I need to say about it or say how I feel about it. And that's what I did. Please stop coming for me. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to end that discussion on that topic. And just for clarification, that was placed on the agenda. So, there was discussion about that. So, I don't want anybody thinking that we blindsided you with that, okay?
Yeah, there was discussion about a censor for me. There was also discussion about a censor for Laura. That didn't make it on our agenda.
Well, that is up to this board.
Thank you.
And that's the same process.
I, I just, I just think we've got to realize that at one, at any point, this board needs to be fair to every member of the board.
And that's what we're doing.
Period, point blank. And I, and I mean, regardless of what you say, we've had closed sessions about this discussion that did not occur for me. I did not have that opportunity for board members to ask another, me, to do something about what I said that they did not agree with. I didn't have that opportunity. And we've got to be respectful to each and every single board member. We're all elected officials. That is all I'm asking.
All right. Thank you. So, we are going to move to 9.01, the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Aneh.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Walker, Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Now, we will move to our action agenda items. 10.01, the submission of the training hours for the, to the North Carolina School Board Association. May I have a motion that the submission of training hours to the North Carolina School Board Association be approved as presented?
Could someone give a summary of what that was?
You should have had that on your.
I'll just give a, tell, tell the public what, what you completed the training on.
Okay. Hang on one time. Let's, Mr. Walter? What, what is your question? I'm not sure. We're approving hours.
Can we tell the public what we, what we did the training for? And what was it?
So, it's all, all of the submission of all the hours. I'm not sure what your question is. It's just the approval that we always do for all the members' hours so that they go into the state.
Okay. So, it's a submission to the state.
Yes.
On hours that were completed during the year.
Right. Which is something we have to do.
Want to make it clear.
Okay. Great. Mr. Furr?
Only question I had on it, all the other 10 or 11 years I've been here, we, our retreat hours were on here. Are they not going to be on? I didn't, I didn't see them.
Right. I actually asked Ms. Perps to take a look at that so that we can verify. I'm not sure if it just got missed or if the hours were not identified.
So, we're going to bring that back at the November meeting, Mr. Furr. We were trying to verify the hours and make sure that we were accurate in that, which is why we did not put it on tonight. We didn't want to be incorrect in our assessment. So, we're looking over the hours and the agenda to be more exact on that. So, that will be on the November meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Well, with that there, because we did have the ethics training too with that. So, you're checking all that.
Right. So, we're just doing tonight what we, we know is accurate. And then in November, the rest will be done.
And I can tell you, the last ones remind, those were all free.
Okay. With that being said, may I have a motion that the submission of training hours to the North Carolina School Board Association be approved as presented?
Aneh.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Okay. That concludes our action agenda. We will move to 11.01, which is our guest speakers. I'm going to read the disclosure statement. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the direction of the board chair. The speakers will be called in the order in which we received the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the board clerk. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. And I will just ask if everyone will please be very respectful. When, when you're up here, it's really hard for everyone to hear and I know you don't probably understand that piece of it. And then the cameramen are back there, so it's extremely hard when there's a lot of noise bouncing off the walls. So, if you will, I'll just ask for no comments, no applause, let every speaker speak and give them that respect, okay? So, I'm going to ask for speaker number one, who is Russell Wright. And if you'll just key the mic, please.
Good evening. My name's Russell Wright. I've lived in Cabarrus County since moving here from Oklahoma in 2007. I'm a parent to two CCS students and my wife graduated from Mount Pleasant High School. At last week's work session, several board members chastised Ms. Blackwell for interviews on various outlets. Her national interview where she spoke with Steve Bannon, by the way, it's on rumble.com or it can be found on Lindell TV. I'm not going to say anymore about that. Meanwhile, her interview with Sloane Rachmuth where she suggested that ex-president Donald J. Trump's book should be put on school libraries is in YouTube. I wonder why she picked online outlets instead of local news outlets like News 14? Was she hoping for more, better exposure? You could explain, but I really don't care. The Art of the Deal and Surviving at the Top were written based on Trump's business acumen in the late 80s and early 90s, which the New York Times recently proved to be a farce. Tony Schwartz and Charles Leerson, who ghostwrote those books, now regret their actions. In an interview for The New Yorker prior to the 2016 election, Schwartz said his work put a lipstick on a pig and he felt a deep sense of remorse presenting Trump in a way that brought him wider attention and made him more appealing than he is. By the way, another quote by Schwartz, random house should take the book out, print or recategorize it as fiction. Leerson said Trump had more interest in looking at fabric swatches or wood paneling samples than look, working on his book. It was a surprise that, quote, this appeared to stem from his lack of understanding of much more important business decisions. In a layer Business Insider interview, he surprised Trump's motivation to take the White House documents or to sell them as, quote, presidential memorabilia, saying, if there's a grift to be grifted, he's going to grift it. Wouldn't you love to know what his other co-writers thought of him? Only about 100 people emailed the school board about looking for Alaska. A previous petition to remove Superintendent Lauder and several teachers was successful with less than 1,100 signatures. Meanwhile, an active online petition to remove Ms. Blackwell due to your actions in 2020 has over 5,000. But she hasn't been removed. She's been censured, the political equivalent to a slap on the wrist. Mr. White, you should read Policy 2120, Sections A3 and B5. The accusation Ms. Blackwell made during the September 12th meeting with no factual basis regarding the students in our own school system is a violation of those policies. Why hasn't she been punished for those words? Was it because she said on purpose during a board comments or instead of accidentally during a break over a hot mic? I'd really love to know. It's very clear the school board's interest in listening to 100 or 1,100 people supersede listening to over 5,000. Last I checked, 5,000 was greater than both of those numbers. By the way, Ms. Blackwell, did you happen to find out which students were hiding and looking for Alaska under their mattress? If not, maybe, maybe you should ask Mike Lindell or Steve Bannon for help since their investigative abilities are second to none. Or maybe Sloane Rachmuth can use her education force alliance and floors to break through FERPA and find out for you. Go to notes from the chalkboard.com, learn about this lawsuit placed against the school board for the lack of transparency they show so much pride in having. Finally, the school board will not remember Ms. Blackwell for her actions. Do the job for them. Do not support or vote for individuals like Ms. Blackwell and those who show deference to her.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Number two, Brandon Matthews. Good evening.
How y'all doing?
Your time begins now. Hey, Brandon, can you, can you key the mic, please?
Is that better? It's comical that they can't let Trump.
Your time begins now. Hey, Brandon, can you, can you key the mic, please?
Is that better? It's comical that they can't let Trump go, first off. Second, she made an interview, she stood her ground, and she stood by that. Unlike Ms. Keisha, who did it and consistently wants somebody to feel sorry for her. Well, I could've done this, or I could've done this, or Ms. Carolyn. Are you for this material in schools? Everybody wants to know. Which way are y'all for? There are maturity levels in children on purpose. An 11 and 12 and 13-year-old kid does not need to learn about oral sex. You want your son or daughter reading it? You seem to be so. 'Cause you know, last time, I sat here and watched you smile as them ladies got up here and talked about how it's, it's a good author. I don't care. You want your daughter to read How to Give That? Seriously, I highly doubt it. So which side are you on? And you're running for house? If you can't make a decision about where you stand on this board, how are you gonna do it in the House? We all wanna know. You, are you for it or not? I thought we all... Well, then quit arguing with her about making a public statement. She's right. 100% she's right. The material does not need to be in the schools. This has got to be the most ridiculous thing I have ever argued in my life. All of you sitting there, you, Dr. Kapicki, that teacher that got up here and taught you like that, she needs the respect to her bosses. You should've fired her Tuesday morning. Done. Tim stands his ground. Laura stands his ground. Holly, she plays the middle. I love you, I respect you, but you play the middle. You can't play the middle no more. There's good and there's bad. You just try, you just try to throw us out of this room for clapping. They turn right around and clap, you didn't say a word. That's what I told you. You can't play the middle, it's either right or wrong. Y'all can't accept that. You just like Keisha. You never wanna accept responsibility. Gained a little bit of trust in you earlier when you said you agreed that you should be able to speak your own mind. She said aye, 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 aye. She quoted out of a Forbes book without doing her fact checking. So it's over. I thought we already had this issue. The mass came up, y'all run this thing, that ended. So when are we just gonna get past it? This has gotta be stupidest thing ever. Make me understand why a kid needs to learn how to give oral sex. What's your, what are you fighting for? The left? Y'all sit there and you look dumbfounded because you can't answer the questions put to you directly. So until you can do that, resign, because you got no balls.
Speaker number three, Elizabeth Evans. Ms. Evans, is the mic keyed?
Yep. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Evans. I have lived in Cabarrus County for 15 years, and I am a proud mother of three children, two of whom attended Cabarrus County schools. The other will when she's old enough. I am speaking to you today to express my concerns regarding the implementation of Policies 3210, 3211, and 3226. On September 19th, this board meant to discuss adopting Policy 3211, which would give them unilateral and immediate control over pulling materials and banning books. After several members of the community spoke up at that meeting and emailed the board with their concerns, the decision was made to discuss and enhance 3200 and 3210 with some of the ideas of 3211. Multiple drafts of the new version of 3210 were created that allowed for greater transparency and more autonomy for our professional educators. However, members of this board decided that it was unacceptable, and at the October 3rd meeting, it was proposed to completely disregard the work that was done by the committee and adopt this unpopular and unnecessary policy without any revisions, as well as attaching unrelated Policy 3226, thus revealing that members of this board never had any real intention of using the recommendations of the committee. These are the actions that demonstrate that some members of this board do not have any respect for our educators or confidence in them to do the very jobs that they were hired for. How do you expect to recruit and retain quality teachers if you keep disregarding their expertise and do not treat them like the professionals that they are? A few Gene Fridays, a teacher appreciation breakfast, and a couple of Facebook posts here and there do not convey respect, especially when you take every other opportunity to attack, criticize, and undermine them on matters that are important to their chosen profession. I wonder what expertise this board thinks that it has to be able to do, to deduce the literary and educational value of the books and material selected for review. Our teachers and media specialists, however, have valuable insight in, to what the books have overall contribution to the classroom. They have spent years in school learning their content area and teaching strategies, as well as hundreds of hours in professional development, continuing to advance best practices. These are the people who should have a say over curriculum materials and have my trust to do so. Politicians who have not had the necessary training or experience should not. I have often heard members of this board say that Cabarrus County Schools strive to be among the best in our state. As you've seen tonight, we have some fantastic students in this district, but we cannot help them to rise to their potential if we keep losing quality educators because they live in fear of this school board. Another statement I often hear is these books are being pulled to protect the children. Which children are you trying to protect? Are you protecting students of color, students with disabilities, refugee students, LGBTQ+ students, the students who are food insecure and economically disadvantaged? Say they deserve to have the curriculum materials that have, and equitable access to those materials that represent them. This is how we will show them to think critically and ensure that they are engaging in the learning process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speakers four, Gwen and Ellen Goodman. Good evening. I can't see the mic, is it, okay.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Gwen Goodman. I have two sons that graduated from Northwest Cabarrus High School, and now I have two grandchildren who are in the Cabarrus County Schools as well. So I wanted to speak to you all about the, um, Policy 3210 with the school books and just share my feelings. Books containing explicit sexual acts or any number of assorted perversions have no place in the school libraries. At a minimum, there needs to be a rating system to ensure age-appropriate content for younger students. Today's world is tough. Our young children are being confronted with issues no child should ever have to face, things we could never believe. Tragically, many are becoming casualties because they have no, no one to protect them. I cherish the innocence of my grandchildren who are in the school system now. I want them protected from adult content and perversions, not given access to it. It's the responsibility of families and schools to protect our children. It's on us. We can't let them down. Books are powerful and life-shaping. We can either provide wholesome books, which lift up and encourage our children, or those which confuse them and destroy their innocence. Without a doubt, this is a spiritual war, and our children are at stake. We can't afford to lose this battle. I'm asking you as a school board to fight for our children with all that you've got. You know what God would have you do. Please help preserve their innocence. Please protect them.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaker, oh, I'm sorry, continue.
My name is Alan Goodman. I am a proud graduate of Northwest Cabarrus High School. Go Trojans! My son is also a graduate of Northwest. I have one granddaughter at Bogart Elementary, and a second granddaughter will be there next year. I have lived and worked here my entire life. I've been involved in many civic organizations and church here over the years. One gratifying project involving the schools was leading the Lunch Buddy program at the Glenn Center Opportunity School. During that year-long project, we had about 35 volunteers and 35 students were mentored. In other words, this is home. I love this great community, and I love the school system. It's been good to me and my family. Rotary is one civic organization of which I am a member. For anyone not familiar with Rotary, it is a service organization with clubs around the world. Rotary has what is referred to as the four-way test. We're encouraged to practice the four elements of this test and all the things that we think, say, or do. One of the four elements is simply, will it be beneficial to all concerned? And I repeat...
I'm gonna let you finish that sentence.
Okay. Will it be beneficial to all concerned?
Thank you. Speaker number six, Brian Floyd.
Good evening, hello, my name is Brian Floyd. I didn't come here to promote myself, I didn't come here to campaign, I didn't know I was supposed to bring signs, or I would've, I guess. I didn't come up here to yell at people who can't yell back at me. Came here to say something I think we all need to hear. Our children and our schools have very real problems right now. Not always exciting ones, but real ones that we need to solve and that they're counting on us to solve. They're counting on us. Teacher and staff support, the budget, growth in facilities, safety, EC, transportation, equitable education coming out of pandemic, these are real issues that our school system faces right now. Problems that actually directly affect every child in this district, yours and mine. We can't do anything about any of them till we learn to work together, respect each other, compromise, not marginalize each other, and put our children first, ahead of ourselves and our own pride, which is really hard to do a lot of times. For a while now, we put the focus on ourselves. We've become the stars of this show, the names and faces of Cabarrus County Schools, and that's not okay. That has to stop. We're not the star of this show. We are here to support this show. You know, I'm an independent, I specifically follow that way to run because partisanship has got to go. The fighting, the scheming, the rumors, the anger, the games, it's gotta stop. I heard a rumor about myself and some other candidates three hours ago that's ridiculous and completely false. Dr. Kapicki, I fully support you and everybody whose mission is to support our children. He put that on the record right here now. All we're doing is playing games with our children, who are voiceless in this, by the way, who are voiceless, while we play games to suit ourselves. Do I have stances and opinions on all these issues that are coming up? Of course I do, I'm running. But that's about me. So I choose to focus, and I encourage us all to focus, on putting our children herself, or on putting our children first and not ourselves. You know, three candidates are gonna get elected in November. Whoever they are, they need, they need to be prepared, or we need to be prepared, to check our pride at the door and work together for the schools and our children. I'm not running out of anger to run against somebody or something, I'm running out of love, love for our schools and for our children, and everybody at the table who is ready to work to bring them back to the top. That should be our only priority. And if I'm lucky enough to be elected, that will be my first priority, because my kids' school is no place for our ward, whatever it may be. So I support you all, despite what rumors you may hear, start or share, I support you all. Whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I support you all, because I cannot support my children and our children if I don't support you. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Speaker number seven, Pam Escobar.
Hi, I'm Pam Escobar, I'm running for school board. I have two daughters in Cabarrus County Schools. I'm a mama bear for yours and mine. Every month, I've come forward to share concerns about schools and about our kids. Parents, teachers, bus drivers, and students ask me to share their concerns. A student told me that her brother doesn't have two teachers. He's in high school and has no grades for two classes. We're required to provide a quality education. What is he learning? And he isn't alone. A mom told me her high school freshman doesn't have an English teacher. What is she learning? What about the kids getting us to school late every day? What are they learning? My neighbors and I were rezoned from Harris Road Middle School to Winkler Middle School, a nine-minute commute to a 30-minute commute. We stood here and told you it was a concern. We were assured by you and the transportation director that it would be fine. Kids are late. And when parents call to complain, they're told to track their kids and to collect data, or parents are told to drive their kid to school. How is that a solution? And then there are the bus drivers. Bus drivers, like teachers, have been told not to share what's happening. Hiding the truth doesn't make it go away. They are running double or triple runs with middle schoolers sitting three to a seat. Bus drivers get no thanks and no incentive to keep doing it. You need 40 bus drivers and you aren't retaining them. If you can find money to buy cameras for buses, you can find money to pay bus drivers extra for their extra work. This board doesn't address problems, it's playing politics. Let's be clear, if there was ever an issue with books, parents, citizens have always been, been welcome to address it with a teacher or a principal at a school. That was the policy before May and has been for the last six months. But that policy doesn't get you on a podcast. In August, you approved a new policy to question a book with a form, but that form doesn't let you remain anonymous. You said during one of the meetings, you and your fellow school board candidate looked for a high school parent to fill out the form, but no one wanted to fill out the form. There was no parent who felt so strongly about the content of the book you read aloud that they were willing to engage with your, their child's school and get it pulled from the shelf. You didn't even feel strongly enough to fill out the form yourself. You're a high school parent. You could have, you could've filled it out, but filling out a form doesn't get you on a podcast. Reading it aloud and falsely accusing parents of supporting this book does, does get you on a podcast. Hundreds of parents have signed a letter after letter to this board, not begging for this book. They are begging for transparency. If you have a policy, make it clear. Post what's being reviewed and have an appeal process. Transparency, respect, kids, those should be your priorities. Instead, this board is collectively putting politics before those priorities. There's nothing political about putting kids first. I'm running for school board, I've been consistent. Share concerns about schools, sharing concerns about our kids. I'm a mama bear for yours and mine.
And I overstepped. Speaker number five, Chelsea Carpenter, my apologies. In 2008, I started my career, is this good, this one? You're good, turn that one off right there. Do I get my time back? In 2008, I started my career as a public school teacher and did some of those years here in Cabarrus County. As a beginning teacher, there were things that just didn't make sense at the time, but now are pretty clear. I completely understand the agenda behind it now. We were taught the term "boys and girls" wasn't to be used anymore. Terms such as mathematicians, readers, students were to be used instead. Math became increasingly confusing and vague with multiple ways to solve simple problems. The standard algorithm was no longer being taught as the standard. We were introduced to the idea of the hidden curriculum, which is the subjective curriculum taught by the teacher from their points of view. After that, the approved textbooks were removed from my classroom in the beginning of the year. I'll never forget when a cart came in, the textbooks came out of the shelves, went on the cart and rolled away, and I was like, what am I gonna teach with? As a beginning teacher. I was able to be trusted with this new vagueness because my goal was not to push my own agenda on the students. I wanted them to be strong readers, able mathematicians, understand the timeline of history, be able to do the scientific method, and then legibly and concisely write about all those subjects. I cared about my students and I knew when they were hurting, but I also knew I could not share my personal beliefs with them. What I thought was best was to tell them that there's a God who loves them, that he's a father to the fatherless, and to pray with them, but I never did that. Fast forward 15 years, and I can no longer safely put my children in public school. Because what you think is best is to have books that explicitly talk about a 13-year-old's first experience with sodomy or oral sex in the libraries and possibly the classrooms. What you think is best is to have no set of textbooks, but allow the teacher to subjectively pull material that may or may not meet the standard course of study. What you think is best is to hide information from parents about their children if the child decides to tell their guidance counselor they may wanna change gender or pronouns. Currently, public school cannot be trusted to not push an agenda. The lack of rigor and moral decay in our education system is why we're here. I know a lot of people here tonight, and they have very full lives. It's a sacrifice of time to be here, but that's how important these issues are. And that's why on November 8th, I'm voting for people who care about parents' rights and who care about family values. Sean Turner, Laura Blackwell, and Melanie Freeman. Thank you.
Speaker number eight, Melanie Freeman.[1744.87]
This is an emotionally charged night for everybody. I attended the literacy committee meetings, and although I believe it was repeatedly billed as a committee that would not be making policy, that was the intent and direction that it seemed to take. Mr. White opened the first or second meeting with a reading and understanding of the 10 points that were in the public letter that was sent to the school board. And from then on, this was the emphasis of the meetings, one point of view. Roughly 18 people were on this committee with three board members, Denise Adcock, Carolyn Carpenter, and Laura Blackwell. Of the remaining 15, only two had an opposing view. My question is, who chose this committee and why were both sides not equally represented? I agree that board members probably should not have been on this committee, but equally so, probably none of the other stuff, people should have been there either. This was a parent issue. It was a parent that did not feel comfortable with filling out a form. That is what spearheaded this whole discussion and downed this whole of the policy. So I think it should have been a parent committee, and then it could have been moved to a policy committee and then on to the board. Maybe that seems kind of simplistic, but it was continually said at these meetings, I think we're making this too difficult, and amen, they were. May I just say that one of the issues that I had with my children when they were in public school was the confidentiality. I addressed an issue in the morning, and my kids were harassed on the bus trip home. Somebody left the cat out of the back. So I have experienced the same thing these parents do. The confidentiality does not, they're not guaranteed that. It's a word, but obviously, these parents did not feel comfortable coming forward because they don't trust that confidentiality. Lastly, you remove one book from one school? Well, that's wonderful, but Houston, we have a problem. Next year, you may redistrict me, and now my child has that in their school again, which means I have to start that arduous process again. So where's the uniformity in our system? Will every school just do what is right in their own eyes? One side wants to push this through quickly because they have the advantage right now. This process, which you have touted that you want to get right, well, that didn't happen. We want a fair and balanced look at this issue, and it needs to be done right. And may I say, in closing, the vetting process for books is a program that media specialists use, and nothing on it has sexual ratings. Thank you.
Speaker number nine, Courtney Steinberg.
Sorry, I'm a little tired this evening, and it's been a long night, but I didn't prepare anything specific, so sorry if I meander. First, I want to express my disappointment and concern that my child's principal has resigned. Dr. Cook is excellent, and it will be a huge loss. And I just want to go ahead and say that right now. I don't know that she's, I don't know why she's resigned except that she has. I received that note in my child's binder today, and it's a huge disappointment because I know the teachers respected her and cared for her and stayed at that school in large part because of her. They have a great retention effort there, and I'm concerned now what's going to happen because I see what's happening in this board right now. This is a circus. Do you understand? Who wants to work in this? I don't care how much you pay somebody. I used to do HR. You can have the best HR department in the world, and if you act like this as leaders, no one wants to work for you. No one. This is disappointing and disturbing and disgusting, and as a parent, I am embarrassed and I am ashamed to be here. I don't want my child in a system that looks like this. And I'm gonna call out the elephant in the room. The difference between Ms. Sandage and Ms. Blackwell is that Ms. Sandage is black. Let's be very clear. Let me also, while I have you here, let me bring out a couple statements you maybe haven't seen, maybe you have, that Ms. Blackwell made on her Facebook page, right? It's a public statement, public statement. But the Book Fair at Mount Pleasant has books for sale that shouldn't be allowed to be? That's a different person. To which Laura Blackwell for Cabarrus County School Board replies, agreed, which is why Scholastic has been notified that we will no longer be using them as a vendor if they cannot be trusted. This mess has to be called out and stopped. So is she speaking for you as a board? Is that a decision you have made? As a parent, are we not using Scholastic anymore? That's a huge source of funding for us. What's the deal? Also, on a post about C.C. Griffin Middle and something they had on their webpage that happened to be, appear to be rainbow colored, she said, "This has been addressed. The books have been pulled for review, and the superintendent has handled the situation appropriately. Please keep us updated as you see situations that we can address them quickly." So were these books pulled or not? Because we've been told as parents that nothing has been pulled. What happened? Where's your transparency? That's what we want to know. That's why we're here, and that's why we don't trust you. I don't trust you with my kid. I trust every teacher and administrator out there, but I don't trust you.
Speaker number 10, Sam Tredaway.
Ever since I filed for office, I have worked to carry forth a positive message. This is who I am, and I also know that being critical and negative is never a way to solve problems. In that spirit, I would like to offer some feedback related to the recent dust storm over literature in our schools. As you know, I sent an email to the chair after the first meeting of the Literature and Supplemental Materials Review Committee. I later emailed the board with my thoughts as well. I have posted those on my webpage so the public can read my expanded thoughts on that matter because, as a longtime principal, that the original process we had for literature reviews and challenges in Cabarrus County Schools was totally functional and appropriate. It had remained as our policies, it had remained as our policy since 2008. It allowed decisions to be appealed from the school level to the superintendent and then to the board. As a school principal, I oversaw this process many times, and the processes and procedures were perfectly functional and reasonable for parents, students, and educators alike. Numerous times recently, I have heard that there was no process, and that simply wasn't true, at least when I was a principal. It was very true. Ninety percent of the discussions regarding the appropriateness of materials start and end with a healthy conversation between the parent and a teacher. That's the way it should happen. Respectfully, books deemed by the board to be too illicit for a high school library should never be read online during meetings so that every student with a phone can observe and listen. Clearing the room for the reading is evidence that we are out of touch with our students' access to the World Wide Web and all that it entails. The excerpt read in public comes from a book that has been on our bookshelves for 17 years. It could have been challenged by any parent at any time during that very long timeframe. It seems a bit odd that it has only now become a board priority. Meanwhile, we are not spending time talking about the challenges of redistricting for our growth, our teacher retention. We're not talking about recovering from COVID, and we're not even getting to Dr. Kupicki's exciting new strategic plan. Decisions, especially ones that, where there is passion on both sides, well, they're only as good as the process used to reach those decisions. Respectfully, we can agree, I hope, that this whole mess has not been well. It's been a debacle, and I hope we can learn from it so that we do not go through this predicament again. Our kids deserve better. Thank you.
Speaker number 11, Ellen Ivers.
My name is Ellen Ivers, and I'm a parent to two CCS children. For the past several months, the Literature and Supplemental Materials Committee has met to propose a fair and balanced policy to address parental concerns with media and supplemental materials. I was invited to join the committee at the end of the summer. As you know, the committee is made up of teachers, principals, media specialists, administrators, parents, and board members. In September, the committee was asked to go back to the drawing board to incorporate more changes suggested by the board. The committee met for an additional six hours during September. Some of the school employees on that committee likely had already been working since 6:30 a.m. that morning, and they still came to a three-and-a-half-hour meeting that night. Several members of the committee did extra research outside the meetings. They looked at similar policies across the state for good and bad ideas. They reached out to educators across the state to hear what their experiences were with these types of policies. In all, tens, if not over 100 man-hours went into that draft policy of 3210 presented on October 3rd. Votes were taken, and overwhelmingly, the committee of principals, media specialists, teachers, parents, and board members approved the details in the processes and the overall policy. Yet on October 3rd, the board continued to disagree with the work the committee presented. Not only did the board disagree, but two board members who were on the committee made it a mockery by going to national media and claiming they didn't understand the draft policy. The committee discussed many issues of having anonymous reporting allowed with regards to books and materials. Not only does anonymous reporting create the possibility of overwhelming our schoolworkers, but it also puts the district at risk for abuse. The board's conversation on October 3rd truly made it seem like the hours of time, research, and compromise was not worth the effort. I'm here tonight again to ask you to trust your teachers, principals, and your media specialists to help craft this policy and run the processes that are outlined within. I trust so many people in this district, but how can I trust this board with my kids' education when the board is doing everything it can to disrespect the actual educators? Crafting a policy to ban books has been political from the start. End this nonsense and move on to actual issues in the district. Please address the teachers that are leaving the district. Please address how some classrooms have permanent subs for core subjects. Please address why teacher assistants are being pulled away from their duties to sub and aren't being paid for their extra work. Please address the five-year-olds who are waiting for the bus in the cold for over an hour. And please help teachers and parents find ways to address learning loss. Please make sure our kids are safe at school. This is what we care about. Approve policies 3200 and 3210 as they were presented on October 3rd and be done with this issue.
Speaker number 12, Sean Turner.
Is this thing on?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, guys. Wow. I want to start by thanking you guys for putting the public comment last at the end of the meeting because undoubtedly, this is some of your critics' first time ever making it to the end of the school board meeting. If they would stay past the public comments, they would see that those actions are actually getting worked on. Tonight, I just want to redirect your thoughts and energy on the original concern of the sexually explicit material in the schools. At this moment, the entire issue's been diluted to a point that I'm not sure anyone really understands what we were really originally, what was the matter? I attended the last literature review committee. It took up three of those 100 man-hours that were just spoken about. All the intention behind that committee probably came from the right place. It certainly developed into a perfect example of government over-analyzing a problem and over-engineering a solution. I listened to committee members spend close to an hour defending what a parent is, when in reality, they probably should have been defining what pornography is. Last month, during public comment, I listened to multiple people lobby from this material to remain in the libraries. I was likened to Hitler for wanting to remove literature that details a man anally raping a young boy. I was told that since I don't have a child in high school, I shouldn't be concerned, nor should I be able to voice those concerns. As a, as a parent, and as a man, and as a Christian, I'm here to tell you, my concerns go beyond that of my own child. I was told last month that since I don't have a master's degree in education, I cannot legitimately determine what sexually explicit material is, and I should leave it up to the professionals. Maybe they're right. I'll play along at least. So I'll let North Carolina, I'll let North Carolina determine that for me. You can find the definition in North Carolina General Statute 14-190.1. I'll be glad to share that with anybody. Last month, I sat quietly in the back of the room, and I listened to speakers paint me as someone who doesn't support teachers simply because I'm concerned with this type of material. That's an extremely weak attempt at deflection from the real issue. This is not a teacher issue. It's not a parent issue. It is a societal issue. It's going to take a group effort to determine where our morals lie in this county. And make no mistake, morality is at the heart of this issue. It is not political. Here's the bottom line. 235,362 people live in this county as of the 2022 census. As of the last meeting, the petition to keep this material in school was about 235 people. That is 0.001% of the population in Cabarrus County. Each of you sitting on this board were placed there by the majority of the voters in your respective elections. It is your responsibility to stand up for this and yours alone. We don't need to reinvent the manner in which this board operates. It's nothing new for the board to have final say on certain policies. This issue is no different. I have full faith in you that somewhere in, deep down inside of each and every one of you lies the fortitude to stand up for this and make the right decision and set the example for others to follow. Thank you.
Speaker number 13, Myra Frisch.
Can you hear me? I don't have to push anything?
Yes, you're good. You're ready to go.
My name is Myra Frisch. My pronouns are she and her. I have three kids in the district. Seven weeks ago, I was asked to join the Literature and Supplemental Materials Committee. We met twice at the end of September because the board asked us to shore up gaps in the committee's original version of Policy 3210, which deals with book challenges. At our last meeting, we spent over three hours discussing topics including, one, the pros and cons of allowing anonymous book challenges; two, whether or not any citizen of the county should be able to challenge a book or only an impacted parent; and three, how many levels of review, in the case of an appeal, we should build into the system. The committee is quite large and is composed mostly of district employees such as teachers, media coordinators, and school principals, but it also includes a handful of parents and community members and three school board members. During the meeting I attended, every, at every point where a decision needed to be made, we took a vote. Each vote was unanimous or nearly unanimous. Only one committee member, a parent, advocated for and voted for anonymous book challenges. Everyone else voted against them. And only three committee members, all parents, including me, voted no on the policy overall because we believe the final decision on a book challenge appeal should rest in the hands of district-level administrators and academic leaders rather than a group of politicians. Despite my no vote, I can say that the latest policy draft is strong and was supported at the committee level by 100% of the teachers, administrators, and board members who were present and voted. What concerns me is that at the last school board meeting, the board rejected the policy despite the fact that no board member on the committee voiced a single concern during our last committee meeting. I am concerned that the board's actions were disrespectful to the employees who serve on this committee and who gave so generously of their time and energy for many months in a good-faith effort to create a policy that could satisfy everyone. I do hope moving forward that this board will follow the recommendations of the committee as a show of support for the district's employees. Please trust them to do their job so that you can do yours, working on pressing issues like teacher and bus driver shortages and the safety of our children. Finally, the board's strikingly different treatment of two board members, who were both accused of not following board policies, does not set a good example for our children in terms of treating everybody equitably. I hope you will be more fair and careful going forward. In the time I have left, I'd love to give a shout-out to Ms. Wendell and the Mary Frances Wall Center. It is truly one of the most impressive and moving places I have ever seen. Five years ago today, the center gave my husband and me the confidence we needed to adopt our special-needs son. He thrived there for four years, and we will be eternally grateful to the Mary Frances Wall Center. Thank you.
Speaker number 14, Pam Everett.
My name is Pam Everett, and I'm the parent of a Cabarrus County school, of a student in Cabarrus County Schools. In addition to being a parent, my professional career has involved many years of working on different types of teams. I want to share something tonight that I've observed as I've watched the actions of this board over the past several months. I learned early in my career about the key differences between managers and leaders. Managers are effective and get things done. They manage projects, people, initiatives, and requests, and they're a critical part of any organization. Leaders, however, guide the organization where it needs to be. Leaders steer the ship. Leaders determine when priorities need to change, and leaders course-correct when the management is focused on the wrong things. Managers handle tasks while leaders handle vision. My assessment of this board is that we have far too many managers and not enough leaders. And additionally, we have managers who want autonomy instead of collaboration. And when given the opportunity to be on committees with people who think differently and learn from those differing opinions, these board members decide to dismiss the collaborative work simply to get their way. As both a taxpayer and a parent, I find that unacceptable, and I want to know who among this board is going to lead. There is so much energy going into managing, and most of what is being managed is political theater, which is undermining our experienced educators. These misguided attempts to discredit educators, to create a political and cultural wedge issue, only hurt our kids and the next generation of kids in Cabarrus County. I spoke during the September 19th meeting about my concerns of how this board's actions would negatively impact the county's ability to hire and retain teachers. would negatively impact the county's ability to hire and retain teachers. I want to reiterate that concern again here tonight. Across the country, hundreds of thousands of experienced educators are leaving the classroom and there is no army of highly qualified teachers waiting in the wings, just like there were no bus drivers waiting when we ran into the crisis that we're in right now. School boards need to have a plan. So far, it seems this board hasn't really acknowledged how big this problem can and will get, probably because it exists beyond the current election cycle. Managers will keep managing policies for problems that are already being solved and managed by principals and media specialists. A leader would throw a flag on all of the resources that are being wasted on these efforts. A leader would move this board to focus on real problems that are hard to solve and will take a lot of creativity, collaboration, and time. Leading is hard. Leading is not always popular, but leading is always right. I'm asking this team to focus on real problems, think beyond your own short-term aspirations, and do what you were elected to do: lead.
Speaker number 15, Jam Quick.
Thank you so much for having me. I was in the corporate 500 world for a number of years and you studied Bill Braxton's broken window theory and you probably, you practice this every day. You clean your house, the kids come in, they throw the stuff on the couch or they throw it where it doesn't belong, and you're like, "No, no, 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 it doesn't belong there. Put it away." You clean your car, you try to keep it clean, and all of a sudden, someone throws trash in the backseat and you're like, "No, no, no, it doesn't belong there." And so, you know, this policy is used in many places. Some people agree with the policy, some people don't. But the policy says when an unrepaired broken window is a signal that no one cares and so people continue to break the windows. And so I think what's happened here this week, this month, is that we've had people in the community as well as on our board stand up because they've seen a broken window. And the community is very interested in making sure that there's a moral guidance and of the content in the curriculum that's being taught in our schools. And so I think there's so much emotion here because some people are seeing this as an indication that perhaps if we don't address the issues, additional windows are going to be broken. So if you clean that house and you don't, you don't instruct your children to put things away, all of a sudden, your house is chaos and all of a sudden, you're like, "Why did I clean that house?" And so what, what many of the community members are saying here tonight is, "We want you to focus on the brand and the importance of educating our children." But at the same time, we also want you to be free to stand up and say something if you see something that's not correct. You did a great job of speaking out and leading the nation in regards to CRT and what was in, what you didn't want to see here in our schools. And so what we want you to be able to do is stand up when you don't see something right, specifically if it's pornographic or other things in our curriculum. But we also want you to understand that you're responsible for the brand of Cabarrus County Schools. And so parents do have a choice. They can homeschool, they can put their kids in other schools, and so we want you to continue to focus on maintaining the best system possible, but also understand that when there's broken windows, if you don't address it, people will continue to push the envelope, just like that teenager pushes the envelope and does more and more unless you bring them back and remind them about what the guidelines are in the house. You, as a board, we're asking you to maintain the system. Maintain the system of quality education for our children, but also feel free to stand up and speak out when you see something that's not appropriate. Thank you.
Speaker number 16, Brent Witchel.
Thank you so much, and I would first like to recognize the leadership of Laura Blackwell for a lot of us in this room. We appreciate what you're doing for us and thank you for being our voice. My name is Brent Witchel and I'm here to not only address the school board, but parents and teachers throughout the community. And first, I'm going to address teachers. Teachers, I believe in my heart of hearts that you are, most of you are amazing people. I have four kids. Two of them have graduated. They went kindergarten through the 12th grade. They're now in college and I appreciate everything you poured into them. The other two, I have a junior and a senior, and they are thriving. And so I recognize the fact that almost all of you show up every day and you focus on bringing your education, your passion, and your expertise to my children and every children around them and pour into them, and for that, I believe that you truly do make a difference. I also believe, like most of people in this room, that you are significantly underpaid and underappreciated, and it kills me that we cannot focus on those two issues every month when I show up to these types of meetings. But here's the challenge. If you teachers are honest with yourselves, you'll recognize the fact that there is a small but very, but growing and vocal group within our schools backed by very powerful unions, political parties, corporations with lots of deep pockets, with the sole purpose to drive a wedge between the parents and the children, specifically around the topics of sexuality, politics, patriotism, and religion amongst other things. It's unacceptable to most of us in this room and until we can put an end to that behavior, we allow them to continue generating all of the focus and attention, which ultimately hurts all of you fantastic teachers that we love. So do not pay attention to the whisper campaigns that tell all of you teachers that people like me, that happen to be conservative, people that are of faith, people that put a priority on family values that were against you because that is 100% inaccurate. Parents, I want you to know, and any other person of age to vote, we have an election in less than a month. When it comes to the school board, I need you to abandon both political party endorsements. They both got it wrong. Did you know we have 11 people running for three open seats on the school board? Did you know that only four of the 11 represent my family values and probably yours? We can only vote for three, so we have to get this right or we are going to split votes and the problems will continue to get worse. So if you found yourself asking, if you found yourself asking, I don't know what I meant there. I urge you to join me, oh, if you found yourself nodding your head in agreement with me tonight, I urge you, in any portion of what I've said, I urge you to join me in voting to reelect Laura Blackwell, Sean Turner, and Melanie Freeman. I expect you to keep me honest. Don't just take my word for it. Reach out to them, do your own research on those three, and if you know me, reach out to me, too. We have to get this right. And finally, give me just a second. I'm the last speaker, please. I woke up this morning hearing a great example in the news of why all this matters. They highlighted the fact that we have a crisis in our military, meaning we have super-low recruitment numbers. And ask yourself this, if you don't think these little things that we get upset about matter, I want you to realize, how do we expect our kids to voluntarily stand up and protect our country when not even...
Mr. Witchel, I'm going to have to cut you off. Your time's up, okay?
We don't even let them or ask them to say the pledge allegiance in schools. That's why people are volunteering for the military. Thank you.
We appreciate your time, okay? Thank you. Good night. Okay, I'm going to allow y'all a moment to go ahead and exit out. I'm sure you're ready to leave, so just go ahead and take a moment to go out if you'd like to at this time, okay?
May I, Chair, ma'am?
No, let's go. So that has conducted the business of the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Business Meeting for October the 10th, 2022. May I have a... Guys, I need y'all to exit quietly, please. May I have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3 and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6. Officer Hans, would you please have them to exit out quietly, please?
Please, quietly.
Yes. Oh, well, that's okay. Whoever. May I have a motion?
Come next.
Have a motion by Mr. Fur, a second. No, okay. A second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We will now be in closed session and say goodnight to our viewing audience that has joined us on live stream and those that are here with us. Goodnight. We will see you at our November meeting. Thank you.